Well, welcome back. We are reconvening an open session from our closed session, which was a public employee performance evaluation, and we have no reportable action tonight. That brings us to our regular meeting of Larkspur City Council, which is Wednesday, September 3, 2025. It's now about 6:45, and I thank everybody for your patience. This was a really important meeting that we had to hold earlier, and we're really pleased with our outcome. So we're beginning, and I think we need to do a roll call again. I, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You've got a different one in order here. I have it here. Backtrack on that. We're going to start with proclamations. 3.1 proclamations. This is one of my favorite parts of this role, especially for this person who's one of my favorite people. This is a proclamation honoring Community Development Director Elise Simonian upon her retirement from the city of Larkspur, which I'm very unhappy you're doing that, but we understand. So I know you don't like to have a lot of focus on you, but it would be lovely if you would sit right there in that chair. Would you mind? I'm not gonna make you stand, but yeah, sit there. Then you're on camera a little bit better than being in the back. So I have a proclamation which I will read, and there are a lot of whereas's in it, but that's how we write proclamations. This is a proclamation of the Larkspur City Council honoring Community Development Director Elise Simonian upon her retirement. Whereas, Community Development Director Elise, I'm gonna not put your last name in there because we all know, is retiring after a 26-year career serving the people of Marin. Whereas, Elise leaves public service having worked for the city of Mill Valley, the town of Ross, the town of San Anselmo, and the city of Larkspur, leaving a legacy of influencing and balancing growth with the preservation of community character. And I have a side note on this. When you moved here to Larkspur, several contractors told me, oh, you scored the best community services director because we, and these were contractors, you told me that. Whereas, Elise bravely completed her tour of duty in the city she calls home, sometimes finding that a friendly hello can be followed by what in the world is the city thinking approving that remodel? Whereas, in her three and a half years with Larkspur, Elise's accomplishments include bringing a languishing general plan update to completion, very true, while guiding the city through an extremely challenging housing element update. Whereas, during her Larkspur tenure, Elise oversaw a complete transformation of her department, including transitioning the building division from an outsourced to an in-house operation. Whereas, Elise's travels around the globe have been an inspiration to other staff members to embrace the mantra, work to live. Oh, I gotta know more about your travels. That's my thing. Whereas, though knowing Elise, many a Larkspur staff member learned exactly where to find Estonia on a map. And whereas, Elise's cheerful disposition and positive attitude touched many and will be greatly missed. Good thing you're only right down the street, though, so we'll see at the wine stroll, I'm sure. I, Mayor Catherine Way, do proclaim our deepest appreciation and gratitude to Elise Simonian on her exceptional service and enduring contribution to the city of Larkspur. I witness, therefore, I have hereunto set my hand and cause seal of the city of Larkspur to be fixed this third day of September 2025. Would you like to say a few words?
Just a few. I just wanted to say thank you. I'm very honored by that proclamation and very grateful to have been able to serve the city as Community Development Director. Thank you very much.
And I will ask my colleagues, anything you'd like to contribute? I think it says it all here.
Well, just real quickly, I got to work with Elise on the housing element, and I was always impressed, you know, even on a Saturday, she'd be out there tabling in Piper Park. And this was a very technical document, and she never shied from giving her time and, you know, just was a great presence, and yeah, you'll be missed.
Okay, Elise, you can stay the rest of the night if you want. Those are the fun things, you know, it's like ribbon cuttings and kissing babies, but I don't get many of those except my own kiss. All right, so now we are adjourning to our regular meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Candell.
Fine.
Councilmember Margulies.
Here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andre.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Item number two on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council for matters that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone, and remember, since it's not on tonight's agenda, we can't have a lengthy conversation about it, but we can direct staff for a future agenda item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on a matter not on tonight's agenda? Okay, thank you. Anyone online? I see one hand raised.
Our first comment will come from Tamara Hall.
Hi, Tammy.
Hi, I just wanted to say thanks to Elise. I know she's not on this agenda. She was on the proclamation the other. Definitely, I think you need to hire her to train all your planning commissioners going forward because I know that she was a huge, huge, huge help to me in the learning process, and so gonna miss her a lot.
Thank you. I let that slide because it was on the agenda, but Tammy is one of our planning commissioners, and she obviously has spent a lot of time with Elise, so thanks, Tammy. Anybody else online? No. Okay, that brings us to presentations and proclamations, which we have already done in our special meeting. Item number four is approval of the consent calendar. Are there any members of the council who would like to have an item pulled from the consent calendar? Yes?
Yeah, not pulled, but just for clarification, item 4.5. So I don't think we need to dwell on 880 square feet, but it's just a curiosity. I'm not sure where else we have surplus land, and this is the first time I've seen this. I was just curious to hear a little bit more about context.
4.5. Anyone else want to pull any item from the consent calendar? No? Any member of the audience would like to pull a, yes, Mr. Holmes? 4.5, okay. All right, seeing no other items to be removed, the consent calendar, can I have a motion for 4.1 to 4.4?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No, and no abstentions. Great, so is staff prepared to discuss 4.5 for us? Which is, I think Councilmember Paulson asked for just a short, or actually, I'll let you, what's your concern?
Exactly. You know, so I think the staff report is pretty clear. It's a strip of land, you know, the size of a bedroom, but I'm curious, you know, I just wasn't aware what our holdings were, and, you know, the process, I think, is somewhat statutory, but maybe you can just give us a thumbnail summary.
What'd you find with an older city like Larkspur, where we've been in existence for more than 100 years? You have a lot of unusual recordings of maps, particularly in the oldest parts of town. So throughout, particularly the neighborhoods that are to the west of the downtown and the hillsides, you find that the city actually owns small slivers of land here or there rather than what is more typical in a newer community, which should just be a documented right-of-way or easement for infrastructure. And that's what happened in this case. The city, for a variety of strange historical reasons, has a storm drain pipe in this location and actually owns the land from the ground down. Typically, we would just have an easement, meaning the property owner would have the right to plant on the ground, and then we would have a recorded easement so we could come in and repair our infrastructure if we had to do that. This proposal's specifically to sell the piece so that the owner then owns it and can configure it with the entirety of the parcel, recognizing they can't cover our infrastructure. To your question of what's more common, we haven't done this in a while, but we went through a period where we were discovering we owned a lot of pieces of people's driveways. We don't, we discover that we own maybe five feet into somebody's driveway, or we might own a hedge technically, you know, and so we would work out these sorts of arrangements. What's nice here is the state changed the law to expedite our ability to make these arrangements and not go through the entirety of the Surplus Land Act process when we're trying to do these dispositions.
And do we retain the easement, or do we get the easement?
In this case, we will be recording an easement, and so nothing can be built that's permanent on this particular sliver so that we have access to the storm pipe.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Was there a question? Sarah, did you have a question?
I just, what was really helpful for me, Dan, because we did discuss this, was your mention too that as owner of the land, the liability that we have, and I think that was helpful to let the public know.
So one reason the city is always interested, not only do we want to see people realize the potential of their property, and a lot of times they've already done that, and we're just correcting the map, but more importantly, if we own it, we have some amount of liability, and by making this sale, the owner's taking the responsibility for what's happening above ground.
Are there further questions for the council of 4.5? Mr. Holmes, did you have a further question you wanted to ask since you raised your hand? Okay.
James Holmes, Larkspur. I think the council needs two other additional items of information before acting on this. One is the long list of concerns that the planning commission had and which I have placed on your dais, and they wanted to have you reviewed. And number two, the valuation concerns, the valuation report, which supports the $700 price. The planning commission's concerns go on for three to four pages. And I, as I said, I put them there for you. I know you can't read them all now, but I give you an idea of the extent of their concerns, but I can summarize them by reading here. Acting Chair Campbell said that the agreement does appear to be in compliance with the consistency of the general plan, but they have some general concerns they trust staff will bring up to the city council during the meeting. The only one concern that I saw brought up in the staff report was the requirement for an agreement summarizing some of the land purchasers obligated. But the council and the commission raised at least three other issues. A valuation method, and it's all set forth in these draft minutes. Valuation concerns, easement too narrow, unknown condition of the pipe. And a fourth question, which I raised, and they noted, why the city originally chose to have ownership in this rare case rather than usual easement? I volunteered to research that because that kind of thing would normally be in the minutes of the city council back in those days. I offered to research that. They didn't take me up on that. Anyway, there are three reasons for a particular concern with the valuation report. Number one, the very low price, $700. Second, the valuation report's failure to consider the increase in value to the buyer's property according to the planning director. Again, I can cite that here. And third, one of the comparables relied on wasn't comparable according to one of the planning commissions. This property has very limited development potential according to the staff report because it doesn't meet setback in size requirements, so the development potential will be greatly increased by this. And at a minimum, the valuation report should compare the sales price with the anticipated increase through the valuation of the property, and I don't think that was done. In any case, I think that the city has a fiduciary duty to make sure that the land sale price is completely fair to the city and the taxpayers, and that all issues have been looked at thoroughly with due diligence as the planning commission and.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Is there any staff, do we have a comment on that, or?
The appraisal process for disposition of public properties fairly prescribed by law, and the people that we retain to do that are versed in following the procedures that are set down by the state. I feel comfortable that in this case, they've applied the correct law. I think what the planning commission engaged in, which is fair enough, is this discussion of, does it enhance the overall property value, and should the city somehow enjoy the benefit of that? And I think a response that staff wasn't prepared to give during the planning commission meeting is if the value of that property increases, ultimately, the city will realize that through increased property tax value. So I think the city can look at it as the removal of liability and the potential for long-term realization of improved value. I see that the city attorney wants that a little more process.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that there are a lot of ways to look at these kinds of issues for small pieces of public property and how to appraise them. But I think it's also important to consider that the property is burdened with a city storm drain. There are significant restrictions on the ability of the property owner to use the piece of property. It does increase the overall square footage of the lot, which may derive some potential, development potential, but then that would have to be discounted by the significant changes in state law related to buyright development and also the additional conditions of approval that are being attached to restrict some aspects of development on the property. So while you can look at it and say that there are, it is increasing the overall size of the lot, and that is increasing development potential, it is also coming with some restrictions on the part of the city, and the nature of the property itself is not favorable to development.
Because it's got a storm drain.
So these are all factors that, exactly, that an appraiser would take into account.
And I'm assuming these are factors our appraiser did take into account before coming up with this value?
Yes.
And I see Public Works Director shaking his head. Okay. Are there other questions of staff in regards to this? And Councilmember Paulson, how are you feeling?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just.
With your.
I am, and on the appraisal, I think I'll trust that. Just as a matter of, you know, ballparking, I think, you know, $100 a square foot in Baltimore Canyon, which is $8,800, seems about right to me, which is close to the appraisal. So, I mean, just by back of the envelope, I don't think it's, you know, especially with a professional appraiser, I don't feel uncomfortable with the number.
Okay, thank you for your explanations. Do we have any further thoughts as a council on 4.5? Would anyone like to move it?
I'd love to move it. Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of 4.5 and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? And no abstentions? That brings us to item six, five, which is City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. First off, just a reminder that portion of downtown is going to be closed on Saturday for the wine stroll, and so people in the area should plan accordingly. Magnolia will be closed from essentially where the Left Bank is, all the way up to City Hall. And then also that day, if folks aren't aware, the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority is having its annual Ember Stomp, and one of the things they're encouraging folks to do is plan out what you would do if you were evacuating your home as a voluntary measure. So that's something people may want to look up online and research about and learn more about what they can do in terms of planning for that. And then we've started to push out information, including a banner that's out on the balcony here at City Hall, that we do have some upcoming workshops to begin the dialogue with the community. Now that we are in possession of the Historical Structure Report for City Hall, that provides the foundation for the community to start to discuss the options in terms of what we can do with this building, what the costs are going to be to preserve this building. And so the first of those two workshops is occurring on.
15th.
September 15 at 6:00 p.m. here, and we're going to be giving tours. So I want to thank the Public Works Director, Julian Skinner, and the Assistant City Manager, Shannon O'Hare, will be joining me, and we'll do our best to make the nickel tour worthwhile for everybody ahead of the meeting that evening. And then, you know, we'll build upon that. That'll be followed by a town hall style discussion, and then we'll be doing a charrette the following month. So encourage folks to keep an eye out for all that information and participate. And if you aren't able to come, there will be online opportunities.
And just to piggyback on that, the subcommittee that's working on the City Hall reimagining is myself and Vice Mayor Andre. So if you have questions or concerns, you're pointing people on that. Any questions of the city manager? No? That brings us to councilmembers' reports. I think I'm gonna begin on the right side. Scott, do you have anything?
I have just one thing I want to bring up. I was contacted by probably about 10 parents of Redwood students. The Redwood parking lot is under construction right now. There are many students who both parents work. They live too far to bike or walk to school, and there's no parking for them. So some people have parked in residential areas and gotten $100 tickets. And it's a challenge, as you have a right to a public education, but you have to be able to get there to get your public education. So I spoke with Dan, and we're, you know, I reached out to, you know, someone on the Board of Trustees about a potential public, you know, partnership, you know, to try to resolve this issue. And I will let you know when I have more, but at this point, it's just a problem that has got to be dealt with one way or another. That's all.
Stephanie, anything? Good? Sarah? Okay. Yay?
Nothing today.
That leaves it to me. Just one more thing happening on Saturday is the Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring, or actually, the Bon Air Management Company is sponsoring a ribbon cutting for a new veterinary hospital that's opening in Bon Air Center. So that is at 10:45 on Saturday. So you can do that, and then you can go to Ember Stomp, and then you can come downtown and do the wine stroll. It will be a busy day, so everybody get a good night's sleep on Friday night. But I'd love for you to join us. The new veterinary center is where the old M. Bryan store used to be years ago, on the northwest end of the mall where Wells Fargo, that side of the mall. So I will be there. Great, so that gives us, we're up to item seven, no public hearings tonight. Yay! Which brings us to our business item, and this is the fun part, because we're gonna hear some really good stuff tonight. So, and I'm really thrilled to see so many members of our audience here who are, have been actively involved with this project of the new library and commons. So we'll begin with 8.1, which is the Larkspur Library at the Commons A, which is the September 2025 Project Update Budget Amendment Discussion and Enhanced Landscaping Options. There is a handout for those of you in the back who would like one, and for those of you who are online, you can see Director Skinner has a slide presentation. So take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public. Julian Skinner, I'm the Public Works Director for the city of Larkspur, and we're here tonight with, we're roughly doing about quarterly updates on our library and community space project over at the Commons. And so tonight, I have with me some other members of the team. I'm gonna show you some slides. If there's really technical questions, I may call on some of the members who are here. We have Ignacio Ramirez is here from Kitchell, and then we have Chris and Tom Beal are here from Nolan Tam, and then Carson Miller is here from RHAA because we're gonna share some landscaping enhancement opportunities with you a little bit later on in the presentation. So there are two parts to this agenda item. The first is your update and a general overall budget discussion, and then moving into the enhanced landscaping. The part B of this item, which I'll cover a little bit upfront, is an actual budget amendment. So we're gonna show you some landscaping enhancements and opportunities and chat about some of the costs of those, but we're not asking you to take action on any budget or contract amendment for those tonight. But there is a budget amendment that we are asking you to act on tonight as part of part B, and that's for the street improvements to Rose Lane, the traffic circle, and the little parking area. And the reason we're asking for that budget amendment tonight is because we want to award the contract to the contractor to start working on that. So we want to get the budget part of that squared away. Some of these other things I'm gonna show you will be a follow-up budget conversation after we get direction and feedback from you tonight on what you'd like incorporated into the project.
So will you be doing A and B, or the second?
I think we'll go all the way through A. We'll deal with all the fun stuff.
All right.
And then we'll come back after that, and we'll do the budget amendment for Rose Lane discussion.
Okay, and if you don't mind, if, because this is a lot of material, if council members have questions, we'll just pause and answer those. And then we'll get to the public questions after your presentation.
Okay.
That's how I like to, you know, make sure people get their questions answered. So if you have them, stop us.
All right, so again, just a brief outline of what I'm going to go through in the part A is just we'll give the project timeline of where we are, some recent construction photos to let you know what's going on out on the site. We'll do an overview of the costs and budgets and where we're tracking, and then I will mention the Rose Lane budget amendment, but that'll come after as the formal action on that. And then we'll get into the two potential landscape enhancements that we've been talking about at previous council meetings. And Carson Miller from RHAA will go through a presentation of those. He's got some additional enhanced illustrations for you tonight that show a little bit more than what we were able to produce 2D in the packet. Again, this is the timeline, and so the design-build contract was awarded to Alton Construction. We went through Planning Commission Design Review. We got our building permits. We broke ground in February with the foundation, and then we received our building permit in March of this year. So we're about six months into the construction. We've got about six months left. The projected completion date is in early March of 2026. And everything is still tracking on schedule. This is the same. I haven't moved any of the items in here. I just keep moving that red bar over to show where we are. So if you've driven by the site, you can see that we already got through the framing. The building is wrapped with sheathing and waterproofing. We've got windows starting to go in. The parking lot's been graded, and there's curbs up. We haven't put the final paving in yet, but the parking lot work is underway. And there's a lot of work going on on the inside of the building, running all the cables, all the fire sprinklers, all the electrical, everything that's needed to have the building running before we close all the walls in with sheet rock and such. And then you can see as we project out further, flat work there at the top of the quarter floor. We've actually already started some of that, so they're a little ahead on some of this work. And then the landscaping and the planting is for later in the year when it's the best time to plant the site. And then the siding and the stucco and all the finishes towards the end of the project. So here are some progress photos. This is since June, since our last update. So the last time we were here, the building frame was up, so you could see the skeleton of it. And what's happened since then is the building has been wrapped or sheathed. And so this is the boards that go on the outside of the building. This is kind of like sheet rock in your house, except for it has a fiberglass cover to it instead of paper, which is what you use on the outside of a building when we're going to do the plaster coating that's scheduled for the side of the building. That's the yellow color that we saw, and then the yellow turned to blue as it was painted with, this is a waterproofing and an air vapor barrier that goes over that. So that's kind of the color progression you've seen over the building, and then areas are gonna then get covered in black felt before they get plastered. A look inside, this is kind of standing close to where the circulation desk would be, kind of looking west. There's a little inset here that's further in the building that shows some of the walls and the framing. So the building is all framed like this inside, and all of the metal studs are up, and now they're just running all of the utilities through the walls before they get framed, framed in. They've also, as I mentioned, been working on the site work. This is again standing at the southwest corner of the building. We're looking here, that metal pole in the foreground is a component of the shade structure that's gonna be over the outdoor patio. And then you see the grid pattern in the foreground. That's the reinforcing steel that goes in all of the flat work, all of the concrete walkways around the building. And then the areas where you can see into the building, those are all gonna be glass in the finished product. So wherever there's gonna be walls and either siding or plaster finish, they've already been sheathed and wrapped. And anywhere where you can look and see through the building, those ultimately will be windows in the final design. Here's the flat work that I mentioned. They started on a little ahead of schedule, so this is the crew doing the walkway. This is kind of the pathway, the concrete walkway that would go from Rose Lane on the. kind of the pathway, the concrete walkway that would go from Rose Lane on the north side of the parking lot. So between the parking lot and the building leading up to that main walkway that then would go into the entrance of the building.
Did you sneak a handprint into that concrete?
I can't say.
Footprints?
Yeah. So this is, this is going to be finished with a, a top cast product that's going to be an embellished finish. So it's not going to look like standard city sidewalk with a broom finish. It'll be enhanced a little bit. It's kind of, will mimic a stone or a granite, but it's concrete. The windows have started to go in. This is on the north side of the building. This is in the, or next to the teen area where they put the first window in, and then they're going to be progressing around the building with window installation. And then this is a recap on the budget. So this is the approved budget based on the last budget amendment that you incorporated into the project. Again, we have six distinct projects at this site. And those were mainly split up due to the funding for the project. We have two different grants and they have very strict requirements, what we can and can't spend money for. So the total budget for the project is 17.5 million is approved. And that is split into these six projects between the library, the community space and some of the outdoor space. And then your funding sources that you see across the top, there's the two library grants, the building forward state grant, and then Levine Grant, and then the Commons Foundation, the funding they've supplied to date. The other category is your measure C, measure B, measure G that you've allocated to the different components of the project. And then the last column is the measure, the general fund reserve. So that's, that's the budget as it is today, and that's as it was presented at the last meeting. This is presenting the same bottom line number. You see the 17 million, 514,000 in the, at the bottom of the first column. So this is the budget as approved, and these were the projected costs on the project that we presented to you back in June. I'm showing a slightly different breakout of the numbers here rather than dividing them into the numbers that we need for the accounting for the grants. I'm showing them as components of the work. So the first categories are all Alton's contract who are out there. They're doing the library, the community space and the site work on the site itself. So that's covering parts of four of those projects. And so they had an awarded contract amount. There was an alternate that was awarded to make the community space a little bit bigger. And then there's two change orders that we presented to you previously. There's another slide that'll go into what those change orders were. And so there's an amount there for Alton that's pretty much unchanged from last time, other than we've reduced the cost of change order two down somewhat because the change order two that we discussed last time had some funds in it for starting work on the habitat garden, but we actually only authorized the preliminary design of the habitat garden. So that change order final amount was reduced down to the 400 and 4,000. So that's the difference there. You see a pending CCO or a pending contract change order listed here is 200,000. This hasn't been authorized yet. These are value adds that have come up through the process that we would like to incorporate into the project. And we anticipate will be part of the final project cost. I'll go into those a little bit more detail on a, on a following slide. And then back in June, we were showing the contingency allowance that was still left as 363. So the next column over where I've got it labeled as September of 2025, those are, so little bit of a mislabel. That's not the cost as of today. That's what our projection is as of today, that the final cost would be. So we haven't spent the 18.3. We're projecting at this time that the total project will be 18.3 based on the information we know today.
I'm sorry, the bottom right, the 525, is that what you're asking for in section B of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah. So continuing down the September 25th column to show you what the differences are that we're projecting. That we've taken the contingency allowance out because we're not going to close a project with contingency allowance left. We're going to use it to cover some of the other costs I'm going to mention. Testing and inspections, this wasn't really accounted for in the original budget. We did a process this project like any private project. So we're using the planning department, the community development department's third party plan checker and inspector for everything and maintaining a building department log for the project, similar to a, a private project would have to. In addition to that, because we made the switch to a steel frame building, the inspection costs are going up. We had to have an inspector at the steel fabrication shop when they're fabricating the steel to make sure all the welds meet standards and everything like that. So the cost of the inspections has gone up from what we originally had estimated. And then the next ones in green are all related to the street workout in Rose Lane that hasn't been awarded, hasn't been undertaken yet. The first of these is initially, we had estimated about $750,000 to add a lane to Rose Lane, add a little bit of parking and create the driveway into the project. Because we had issues with the right of way on Rose Lane, we left that part out of the big Alton contract and we separated it and said we'd go out to bid separately. So there's an additional cost for doing that. We weren't able to incorporate it in the initial, initial bid because we didn't have the street rights at the time. So it went out as a separate bid, which is always going to be a little bit more expensive than packaging in with a $12 million construction project. In addition to that, the contractors now have to bid the project with an active project that needs daily access right next to it. So the contractor that will come in and do the Rose Lane construction, their costs are going to be more now, given that there's an active project and they need truck and delivery access on a continual basis to their lot. In addition to that, as we work through the final details before we put it out to bid, there are some changes to the irrigation and some of the other utilities, the street lights that will have to be made because the city will own and maintain everything on Rose Lane up to the traffic circle where the library driveway is. And then the HOA will maintain everything beyond that. So there's an, some additional work that's required to make sure that those two systems are separated and we're only irrigating and providing power to each other's services. So we received four bids for that project. The low bid was just over a million dollars. It was a million dollars and 4,000 or something similar to that. We did get four bids. They were all fairly close. So we believe that we've got an accurate reflection of what those true construction costs are. The request here is 1.1 million. We typically will add a 10% cushion to construction bids to allow for any unforeseen activities or costs during the construction. So that delta there is about 350,000 versus what was in the original budget. The next item down on the list is the actual right of way acquisition costs. So we've gone through a process, we went through eminent domain. And so these are costs to date. That process is not finished. We have been awarded the right of way over the land. So we now possess it and we're able to do our improvements. But we're still in a legal process to determine what that final purchase price will be that the city has to pay for Rose Lane. We had it appraised. The HOA had a price and they were different enough that we haven't been able to, to meet anywhere. So we have already made payment in the amount of $40,000 that's been deposited. That's what our appraisal was for it. So that's part of this. 150,000 is what we figured just compensation was based on the appraisal that we had done. And the remainder of that is the, the legal fees and the cost of going through the eminent domain process to date.
So do we have a time? Oh, go ahead. Do we have a timeline for any expected timeline for when that would be resolved?
I don't have an exact one. I know we've been having conversations on and off and exchanging discoveries. I don't have a, I don't have a schedule, but I would think it's, it's already, since we've gone through discovery, should be like in the six month timeframe, I would think.
But we've already been judicially awarded at the eminent domain. So we have the right to use that prop to, to make our roundabout so that we don't access the Rose Lane residential area and have traffic go into our parking lot rather than disruptive to the residents.
Yes. So in an eminent domain proceeding, you can separate the monetary award from the right to take possession of the property. And so that's what we did in this case. We got a, a, we got an order, what's called an order of possession. So the court, because the property owners ultimately did not dispute that the city had the legal right to use the eminent domain process to obtain the, the necessary easements. So because they didn't contest it, the court awarded that to the city. The remaining issues in the, in the case are largely monetary.
Monetary. And I think Sarah had a question too.
Well, yeah, I was just concerned about the risk of, you know, how far apart are we between what we believe the land is worth and what they're asking for? And, and if we start work, that sort of puts us in a compromised position, I would think.
So I, I'd probably prefer not to talk about that in open session, but we have set aside funds to cover the worst case contingency cost wise. So, so we, without jeopardizing the project in any way. I do want to make sure, since we drifted into this topic, people here eminent domain and they hear it sounds scary and it sounds like people are fighting. It's a legal process. Both sides are using attorneys. It's actually very cordial. At least the one we're going through has been very cordial. Each side just has a difference of opinion on what the value of this asset is, and that's what we're sorting out.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Keep, thank you, Julian. Oh, Sky, did you want to chime in or we, I feel comfortable with my answer?
Comment just to say that we might not have gone this route if it weren't for timing issues.
Right.
We, we didn't believe we were going to be able to reach a negotiated resolution with the HOA prior to the city's need to have possession of the property. Additionally, they had to schedule votes on, on, on the sale of the easement to the city, and that was uncertain. So ultimately this, we made the determination that, that for timing purposes and certainty purposes, we needed to take this route, but ultimately we're hoping to resolve this.
And a lot of that timing is the state grant that has an expiration date on it that we know, which was over $5 million. That would have expired and we would have lost. So go ahead, Julian.
Okay. So the, the last line item in this green section, which is the street is a utility connection. So the utilities were stubbed to the property as part of the Rose Lane development, but you know, unfortunately, back then they didn't know exactly where the building was going to be. And so we still had some work leading with the water district and PG&E mostly to modify the utility stub outs to the building. So that's the, the $90,000 that sewer fortunately was in the exact right, right place, but the others were not. And they needed some additional work by the utilities to, to serve the building. So that collectively in the, in the green section, plus the very last item, which is a portion of what we anticipate the final consultants and staff charges will be is about $525,000 for the Rose Lane attributable to the street work in Rose Lane. And as I mentioned, the part B of this item will be your quest for you to modify, amend the capital improvement program to add street funds to cover that 525,000. And I can go into detail during that item, what street funds we're going to use and what the fund balances are and what the impacts might be to, to other projects. And then I skipped over the rebates section here. This is not real money yet because we don't have the rebates. But mostly for the EV chargers, there are a number of overlaying rebates that are available out there through TAM, MCE, and to some extent PG&E. And so in order to get these rebates, we need to have the EVs installed and then we fill out the application and then we can get the rebates back. And then there's also a small rebate. We worked with the California Environmental Development, CETA Association and went through and they did an analysis of all the components in the building, the skin of the building, the HVAC, the heating, ventilation and air conditioning in the building and the mechanical components. And they did an analysis based on energy use. And they gave us credits for having high efficiency units. And so there's a small amount of that money in there that is coming back to us because we have high efficiency features in the building.
I just want to acknowledge the county sustainability team who helped us find CETA and work with them. So.
Yeah, I'm sorry, June, before you go onto the next slide, I'm noticing number 354,000 in the bottom right. I've seen the number in the red box.
314.
3, 314. Yeah, I work on my, not wearing my reading glasses, but you're asking us for 525 tonight. Am I assuming you are going to come to us shortly and say, oh, by the way, we need another 314?
Probably won't be that exact number. So the last row here is the other overage that we're anticipating, which is the, the staff costs and the consultants. Initially, when we started this project and, and received the grant, we were anticipating we'd actually be opening the library now. But for a number of reasons, we went through a couple of different iterations on what this project was going to look like in the beginning. And so this overall process has taken longer than what we initially anticipated. And so we are anticipating there's going to be some overruns in some of those contracts. Working diligently with all of our consultants to make sure that we're getting efficient work product. But at the same time, we're getting the best oversight possible on everything that we're building out there for public use. So. But we do anticipate that that line item is, is going to run over by about 374,000. About 25,000 of that we can attribute to the Rose Lane and the rest will be to the building. So yes, the 525 for the street that's part of part B, we're requesting tonight because we would like to award that contract. The 314, we're not requesting tonight. You're going to receive some presentations in a few minutes about other potential additions to the project in the way of enhanced landscaping. And so we would like to get your feedback on those. That depending on what we do with that landscaping, it may impact some of these other numbers here also. And so what we'd like to do is come back with a, a budget amendment that incorporates some enhanced landscaping based on your direction tonight. And then we'll also fine tune these numbers here and, and bring it to you as one budget amendment.
And I'm sorry, Julian. So just so I understand, the, the 525 and the 314 are not including the enhanced landscaping, which we're about to talk about. So that would be on, you know, you're, we're asking the city to cut a check for whatever 850 plus whatever we choose to do tonight for the enhanced landscaping. Is that accurate?
So it's correct to say that these numbers don't take into account any additional landscaping that you're going to see in the following presentations? Yes.
Okay.
Before he moves on from this slide, any other questions of, of that?
Julian, so can you clarify? So the 525 is going to be paid for using gas tax or other measure C or B funds? And what, so the 314 then is, is the, would be a request out of the general fund or just because there, it, it can't be, you know, we can't use gas tax or other money for that. Is that why it's broken out like this?
Yes. So we're not proposing the funding sources for the 314 or whatever that final number turns out to be tonight. But we know we can use street funds for the 525 because it's on Rose Lane. And as you know, we've, we had a bond measure to pay for paving all of our streets. So what we consider our local paving funds, which is vehicle impact fee, gas tax, and the Transportation Authority of Marin Measure AA, those fund balances are sufficient to support our repaving and our paving maintenance programs for the foreseeable future. So we know that we have a capacity in those street funds to cover the shortfall. And this is the, the construction on Rose Lane and the acquisition are eligible costs for each one of those funding sources.
Great. Thank you.
This is just an overview. I did show some change orders on the previous page. So just as a reminder, what was in those in the first change order, there were a number of enhancements that the Alton and Nolan Tam team had proposed to us when they submitted their proposal. We gave them a, a dollar figure they had to hit for the library and community space. And they said, this is what we can build. If you had a little bit more money, we would like to do these things. And so we shared those with you and you approved the children's patio. And then we also added the solar panels on the roof and the battery energy storage system. And we upgraded the building to risk category four, put the Clear Story windows operable in, upgraded the siding. That was change order one. That was 600,000 and change. Approved change order two were some of the things that were not able to be finished in change order one, because we didn't have complete pricing yet. So that's the So that's the additional electric vehicle chargers in the parking lot. The curved bench that was part of the Commons Foundation funding that they pledged for the project. And then the base project had fabric shade structures in. And there was an upgrade option for putting a wood slatted shade structure in that complemented the building better. And then we did fund with change order two, the preliminary work that you're going to see the results of tonight, where the landscape architects and the team have put together proposals for enhanced landscaping opportunities. There was a pending change order that you saw on the list that was about 200,000. These are things, value engineering, value adds to the project. These are not fixing anything that's wrong with the building. These are opportunities to add things that we think will be a benefit to the public now using the contract team that we have versus paying more for this later. And so one is enhanced audio visual. So we're proposing increasing the the audio visual components in the three public meeting rooms. So that if somebody were to rent them, they'd be able to host Zoom meetings or Teams meetings or something similar. And then also as part of that, we've received a cost proposal for making modifications to that system in the large meeting room so that we could have that room function for public meetings, the same as this meeting room does if we needed to. So if there were for some reason that we couldn't use this meeting room on a given night, this enhanced AV option would allow us to set up in that large meeting room and hold a public meeting, whether it was planning commission or city council, and have Marin TV do their broadcast the same as they do here. So that's additional cameras and it's a switching board. And it basically would allow them to plug and play and go in and do their what they do here. The next was a 10 year security monitoring. So the project criteria documents require security systems, access systems for the doors and for cameras at certain locations. We were really looking at a specific upgrade to this. We've been talking with some of our neighbors who've recently done projects, both renovations and new buildings. And they've used a system that we really like the functionality of. And its price point is about the same as what was in the cost proposal. However, this particular product requires a 10 year license. So everything's in the cloud. And if you're going to install their cameras and access system, you have to sign up for 10 years of monitoring. So basically, the the change order is to cover that 10 years of monitoring that we would have had to pay for any system. But this system requires that you pay for it upfront.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
That sounds a little dry. And this is actually a pretty cool amenity for the community. Not only is this system our security system, it will allow staff to give people remote access to the building and do timed access to the building. And what that means is community groups that want to use the building after hours will actually be able to get a code. They'll be able to enter the room that they've been assigned for the evening without the need for there to be staff present to let them into the building. I think that's an exciting amenity because it it allows us to provide that service to the community without increasing our staff costs. I think that's a big, a big win and worth the investment.
And then the last item on here is the equipment screening. So as we've added some components to the building, this is like the the battery storage that's outdoor and the electrical panels for the building, the switch gears are all outdoor. We basically had in the project a screening fence, so you couldn't see them from the parking lot. But we started to think as we were looking at some of these enhanced landscaping ideas, people are going to be walking around the building and we probably want to fence that area off so people don't have access to it. There's a lot of electrical equipment in there and it's designed to be outdoors and designed to be safe. But at the same time, we think it would be better to screen that off, not just for aesthetics, but also to keep people out who may wonder what it is and try to play with it. So that's the the third pending change order that we'll be able to, again, bring you more details on at a subsequent meeting. And then the last is a future change order. So the question was, is the enhanced landscaping included any of the above? So no, only the work that's taken place to get us to this part, which is the project team looking at and pricing some of this has been included in the budget. So what you're going to see in the next presentations isn't funded at the moment. We've been working with funding partners. We've been discussing these enhanced landscape areas for some time since the conversation first came up about shifting the parking lot south to create some more public space between the building and the parking lot. Back in June, at the June council meeting, June 4th, the team presented some options for what could go in those areas between the parking lot and the building and also the periphery of the building, both the south and the east end of the building that didn't have any landscaping designated in in the plan. They were looking at a putting a habitat garden in those areas. And so after that city council meeting, we met with the ad hoc committee to with the project design team to discuss what may may not work in some of those areas. We also met with the Commons Foundation. They have expressed an interest in providing the funding for the area between the building and the parking lot, the Commons area, we've been calling it. And then also we met with Refugia Marin and the design team met with Refugia Marin. They do habitat gardens and so wanted to work with them to look at what we would incorporate in a habitat garden. What would it need? What would it? What would they like? What would, you know, the needs and the wants? And so we got that feedback. And tonight, what you're going to see as soon as I get through these slides is the landscape architects going to come and give you a presentation of their thoughts based on the feedback we've received to date on what could go in those two areas. We're going to split them out and we're first going to talk about the the Commons area. And then we'll move on and talk about the the habitat garden. And so just as a reminder, these are the two areas on the left. That's the Commons area. This is how it was presented to you last time, which was if we did nothing, basically that area would just get seeded and it would just be lawn without any any furniture or anything. And so they have a plan for enhancing that area. And then on the right, that's the habitat garden. So basically, everything to the south and the east of the the building and the parking lot. And then in the staff report, you have costs that Alton have put together. These are what we call rough order of magnitude costs. So they basically have schematic preliminary designs from the architects. And they've done their best to put a rough order of magnitude, call it a cap, on what these features would be. And so I've taken that information. I've tried to break it down into categories so that we can look at. And if the feedback is we want more chairs, less chairs, less grass, more grass, you were able to look at this and see what the kind of order of magnitude of of those improvements would be. And so you can see as as the landscape architects drew this up, it's roughly about $530,000 for that Commons area space. And I've got it split here into an east area and a west area, which will make more sense when the landscape architect goes through his presentation. And then the same for the habitat garden, we've got a cost estimate. This one, again, we asked them to price everything for a finished habitat garden. So it's got a lot of components to it. The first few categories here are basically for getting the area prepped. So this is moving the soil around, bringing the right kind of soil in, setting the irrigation up and then the planting itself. And then your next line item here is a granite crepe path for circulation. And this is to meet ADA. This is assuming that we wanted to have ADA access to every point of that habitat garden. Now, depending on how it's programmed and how Refugia or whoever would operate it would want to program that area, there are variations in this that could make that number go down. But this is, we asked for, if we had to make everything ADA accessible, what would that cost? And then your last grouping here is amenities enhancement. So this is adding boulders, adding benches, adding little huts and rope and post fences, insect houses and some signage. So those are the cost estimates just to keep in mind. And then at this point, I can pause for any questions or I can hand it over to the design team and they can walk through a presentation that will be a lot more colorful and have a lot more interesting photos than I did.
Thank you, Julian. From the council of this initial presentation, before we get further along, any further questions? Okay. And the dollar amounts that we've seen here, we're including, do we have the Commons allocation is listed somewhere? Or do we know what that is yet?
So the the money that the Commons Foundation has come before you before and pledged and has been amended into the budget is already accounted for in the 17.5 million.
Okay.
We understand from them. They have continued to do fundraising. They have donors who are interested in the Commons area. And they've indicated to us that they believe they will be able to provide the 527, as we mentioned to them, was the approximate cost of this area.
Okay.
They haven't, we don't have it from them. Based on where they are with their fundraising, they believe that they will be able to.
For the Commons area particularly? And then, okay.
Yeah, I think they were probably a little more confident than than. Julie, Julian's trying to be a little cautious, but I felt a strong sense of commitment yesterday that that number is within their their.
Doable.
That's doable. And in fact, they continue to fundraise and they tell us they're being approached by people who have particular amenities they want to talk about. And so we're always happy to have those conversations as well. And there's a lot of folks who are, you know, love trees, love benches.
And yes, we've got lots of opportunity in here for that sort of sponsorship.
And so please, folks, if you want to still support this project because it's so exciting, I encourage you to find the Commons Foundation website and reach out to them.
And then for the second part, the habitat garden, we'll discuss that when we get to it.
Yeah, the the funding part of it's a little bit more challenging. It's a it's a bigger number. And we understand that Refugia has been doing some fundraising.
Okay.
They're, you know, primarily their interest is in the actual planting. There's other components there that, from what I understand, are beyond where their funding is at at the moment. But yeah.
But I'm jumping ahead because I know our request tonight is really to only look at the 525,000, which is for the Rose Lane road development. But I was just curious about the other part yet, so.
Yeah, so the the hard budget request that's in the budget amendment resolution tonight is just the 525 for the street. But we would like some feedback on how much of these improvements we should be moving forward and looking at and trying to figure out, figure out funding for for these two other enhanced areas.
I think Sarah had a question. Yeah, I just wanted to ask you a question to clarify if you don't mind. Julian, you said that Refugia has suggested that they would be interested in providing some money and but particularly for the plantings. So when you say the plantings, if I'm looking at the table for the habitat garden improvements, under the estimated cost, the first four items are about 265,000. Does do all of those items, so things like fine grading and soil preparation, is that part of the plantings? Or is it specific to just buying the plants and planting?
Yeah, the latter. We have Dana Swisher from Refugia is here.
Okay.
She can speak if there's questions on there.
Can we hold on to that question for a little later when we get kind of into the deep into the depths, the weeds of the landscaping plan? So hold on to that question because I know she has a lot to comment on with that. Julian, are you?
I'm good to hand it over if there's no more questions for me.
Well, let's, any further questions of this first section? Any questions from the audience of? Yes.
Yeah, just a clarification. I think Councilmember Candell may have asked. So the the action item for tonight is on the street part, the 525,000. And that is not coming out of the general fund. That's coming out of Measure Measure C money.
Measure B.
Measure B. Okay, that's the storm drains. Okay, so this is not Measure C, which is a storm drain. So it's it's the it was.
G is the storm drain.
G. Okay.
C is the.
I have a little glossary here. Okay, thank you.
I think the important thing tonight, to to kind of go back to how Julian framed it at the beginning, you have two parts tonight. That second part that you're asking about is entirely about reconfiguring and doing the work on Rose Lane and a little bit on the parking that we intend for the staff parking over on the other side of Rose Lane. So the rest of this item is your first opportunity as a group of five to engage the community, have your discussion. And it's been constructed in a way for you to sort of look at these prices, which are probably fairly accurate, but haven't actually been bid, right? The Alton hasn't gone out and got final pricing, but it's going to be close to this and say, I'm not comfortable with that. I'm comfortable with that. I love that. And we need that feedback to work with the team to bring you that final budget amendment. And so although it's not a budgetary talk tonight, Madam Mary, I do think you do need to dive into these numbers after you hear all these presentations because they do work together. And I think it's appropriate to be asking us where we think this money would come from. So I do expect we'll have a robust conversation after the landscape presentations.
Yeah, and I and I think it's also just for your information and for everybody's. It's the subcommittee has been working on this and Scott and I are on the subcommittee for this. And had some robust meetings with the landscape team, including in this July 2025, where the Commons representatives were there also and other members of the community were there to provide feedback. So they've gotten a lot of feedback. So looking forward to hearing any additional feedback. All right, is that any other questions from the audience at this point on this initial information? And I don't see any, and I don't see any hands raised to you? No. Okay. Do you want to stay there or do you want to turn over to the rest of the team?
Turn over to Carson, I think, is going to take the next part. So Carson, if your preference is to stand or sit.
And for this, there are three handouts. No, two handouts.
Two, there's a.
Yes.
A handout for the Commons area, and then there's a separate one for the habitat garden.
Are you? Do you prefer to stand or sit? Okay.
And you have a clicker and then just make sure the mic is on.
And before you get started, I have said this to you in person at our July meeting, but I want to recognize that when you gave a fantastic presentation prepared for in June 4th with the Refugia team, I abruptly made you move it quickly because we had had a very long public hearing and we also had another budget meeting to get to that night. So I apologize again because I thought that in retrospect, you prepared a lot to present to us and I cut you off. So I'm just telling you now, I really appreciate it and I appreciated how much you had put together. That had just been a very complicated meeting for most of us. But we're really looking forward to seeing what you have to say, what you have now.
I can be long winded and chatty, so I don't mind being told heated up. All right. So first off, we're gonna, I just want to say thank you for the time, as much time as we have available.
You have a lot of time tonight because I we don't have a budget or a complicated planning commission appeal tonight.
Sure, I'm sure we want to have a, you know, a nice discussion, so I'll try. A good pace. So we're going to start with chatting about the the Commons area, which this is the design that you had seen previously. This was our original conceptual plan, once we had come back to sort of rethink and re-envision some of these, the space in between the parking lot and the new library building, as well as the perimeter space, which we're now considering the Habitat Garden Plus. And so this specifically is the area that we're talking about. And I think Julian had just put a slide up that just kind of had indicated just a moment ago that this is specifically within the white area here, what we're referring to when we talk about the Commons area. At our prior meeting, we had talked about some of the program and some of the planting approaches in this space. And this is current to what we have tried to include as we've moved forward. And that's to create a TAM view seating area with power, to create spaces that are child friendly, to provide opportunities for folks to get together to read or to have conversation at a variety of different sizes of groups, to provide flexible open space, and then to have planting at the perimeter that features native and drought tolerant plantings, makes you feel nicely encapsulated within that space, to provide biofiltration areas that are planted naturally functioning biofiltrations, shade trees at these seating areas and other spaces that'll mitigate some of that southern sun and make it really enjoyable spots to be. And also to have some more sort of punched up identity type plantings at the at the entry. It might have more color, a little more dye. And so specifically, this is the area that we're now looking at, the Commons area in the Habitat Garden Plus. And this is the revised design or furthered design that we have come up with. So one of the things that we had talked about with the ad hoc committee. So one of the things that we had talked about with the ad hoc committee was the desire to have these different types of spaces at different scales. Places where somebody could get together on their own, oh, sorry, get, could go on their own to read, spend a little quiet time, or they could get together with one or two others, or even possibly a slightly larger group. And so that's what we've tried to do here. Where on the left side of the entry, of the entry walk, we provided a shaded grove with bench seating, movable cafe seating, as well as group tables. The grove has some uplighting, so it'd be really nice in the evening. And then on the right side of the entry path, we've included a flexible open area, which is a native drought tolerant lawn. It is flanked by shade trees and additional spots for folks to sit. And then you'll see on the far right side of, of the Commons area is what we're calling the TAM view seating area. And we proposed a trellis structure there that can be a really nice bookend to this space. Obviously, that can be, you know, discussed later as part of sort of the budgetary discussion. I did also want to mention that we've added a path connection from the Commons area to the children's patio so that you don't have to just access from inside. And that program from the children's area could flow straight out either into Habitat Garden or onto the flexible area of the Commons.
Carson, can I, can I ask a question? So is there going to be some sort of separation to keep the kids in? Or what's, yeah, what's happening there?
Okay, low hip height, three foot fence that goes around the children's patio and it'll have a gate.
Okay, great. And then what is the area behind the shade trellis that's kind of light green?
That's actually a bio, a bio retention area. So it's part of the base scope and not part of the current. It's an open planted area that will receive runoff water and treat that water. It, it's kind of a interstitial space between the Commons area and the Habitat Garden.
Okay, but is it like, do people, can people, I don't know, can a van set up there or can it be used or is it more like drainage? I don't.
Sorry. So this right here is the trellis structure. Those are bench seats right there. And then behind it is a natural space that slopes down and maybe twelve inches or eighteen inches down to a sandy bottom that receives, that is where the water goes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And kind of a little bit more diagrammatic explanation of what I was just referring to, just so that it breaks it down a little bit for folks if anybody's interested. So the gold areas are a paved surface. We've been proposing granite crete ADA accessible, looks like DG would be very attractive. And then on the left side, we see our shaded grove with the plantings on the perimeter. On the right side, we have some larger shade trees along the perimeter of the flexible open space. See the children's area in the, with the soft rounded blue rectangle and the TAM view seating area on the right in the darker blue. The purple is bike rack locations and the red is stroller parking.
And I think just to, to help in some, some of these diagrams to elaborate what the ad hoc committee did, we debated back and forth whether the green grassy area should be on the right side or the left side of the walkway. And I thought that was a really good conversation because we realized we could maximize the children's use because if we maximized it on the right side, then the overflow from the children's area out to that space could be used much more appropriately for a lot of the children's programming, like the puppet theaters and things like that, that they may occupy the space that is for the performance area and that could be a better use of the space for the public. So it's, is that correct? Am I, I'm saying that accurately? Okay.
Yeah, there was discussion about should it be all hardscape? Should it be all softscape? How much should we break it down into smaller spaces? How much should we leave it open and flexible? And the feedback that we had received was that a balanced approach was desired where we were providing a variety of different spaces for seating, for reading, other library activities, but also making sure that we add that flexible open space for a variety of different small events and activities.
Yeah, and not for active recreation like a soccer game or something like that because that is to take place in Piper Park across the street. It's not to take place in this area. This is more for library function and purposes.
Well said.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll look at some images that kind of describe what it is that we're, that we're talking about here. These are some of the program and landscape elements. So we're going to look to have accessible circulation and seating areas throughout the Commons area. The shaded grove area, a variety of seating types for individuals and groups. And that does include chairs that have arms and chairs that don't. Bench seating as well as movable chair seating and, and group table, as well as smaller kind of individual cafe type tables. So hopefully providing a variety of different options. We did also put some Adirondack chairs out in the lawn area, but made sure to provide them at two different seat heights so that for folks who feel less comfortable with the low seat option, there are some higher seat options as well.
And I'm sorry, just to clarify, you have some
Sorry, you have the cat drawings with cafe tables and people having drinks and whatever, a cup of coffee. We're not going to have any kind of cafe in the library, are we?
Not that I'm aware of, no. But I imagine if somebody walked over with their coffee from, from town.
Right.
They might meet up with someone.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
So just to go a little bit deeper into what our paths and paving surfaces are, we have granite creep paving, which is on the left-hand side. And as you can see on that left side, we would be providing open areas at where the trees are planted. So they're not going to go into the granite creep. That wouldn't work super well. So instead, there's going to be splanted rectangles and the granite creep will wrap around it. It will have an attractive edging as shown in the next image over. And then on the, the third image over, we see the exposed aggregate by top cast that Julian had referred to before, which is that sort of enhanced finish on the concrete that will be surrounding the Commons area. And then we have our native drought tolerant lawn surface.
I, I just wanted to take a second just to acknowledge Councilmember Candell's question and, and sort of give a little history of that. When, when we did this original plan many, many moons ago, we debated having a cafe. We debated having even a coffee cart or something like that. And the decision, as I recall, was that we did due diligence to a lot of libraries of our size that have that, and it becomes a loss leader for them. And the cost and the staffing costs were high for that. But we also debated what, that we would, we would take away purchasing opportunities for the downtown merchants and we didn't want to do that. So we have plenty of coffee houses and plenty of cafes, breweries, et cetera, within a block away, and we didn't want to pull away from their business resources. Also, the, the surveys of the other libraries at the time showed that it actually was a, a loss leader in cost for a city to have those because of staffing and supplies, et cetera. So I just want to make sure, we thought through whether we were going to actually have provide a food service and decided that the downtown merchants needed to have our support. So. And, and one last thing was also when you talked about the chairs, I just wanted to thank Julian Skinner for getting some sample Adirondack chairs and letting us go and some of the members of the age friendly group to come sit in them, Barry and I did. Just to, to give feedback about how important it is for us to provide furniture that is, meets all of our physical needs of our community. And thank you, Julian, for getting sample chairs for us to give your feedback to. Because cafe, little tables and chairs are great, but we also need chairs that are appropriate, age friendly for our senior community, and we have included those in this design idea.
Great, thank you. So very well, well timed, taking a look at some of the furnishing options that we've been considering. So we have, as you had mentioned, some of the movable tables and chairs for reading, meditation and smaller group conversation. Those are the chairs that are there in red with those small tables. We do not need to have them be red. I just didn't sort of liked the image. You'll see adjacent to the chairs, the group table there. So we have a couple of these group tables in the shaded grove, although we are using the chair that you see here as opposed to a bench. We also in the shaded grove area, as well as in the TAM view seating area, have included some of these vestery benches which are located here and a child is sort of playing on one there, which have both backs and arms. And so hopefully it would be comfortable for the, the majority of the community. And then these are the Adirondack chairs here on the left. And as I mentioned, we have included those at a couple of different seat heights to enable a comfortable, comfortable use. These are the bike racks that we have in the project as well, although they're not part of this the Commons area funding component. They are part of the basement project. I thought it was important to show continuity between the different site elements. Jumping to a larger site element, we did start to work up an idea for this shaded, the trellis and the TAM view seating area. We've been looking at a steel frame structure with wood insets in the ivy, as you can see right here, as well as a crosshatched wood mover on the roof to create some interesting shadow pattern and a nice shade feeling down below. We have some other images for that as well.
Did you have a question, Stephen?
Oh, yeah. Hold on a second. Sorry, I had a question back on the furnishings. You know, I like the variety of different seating and the ability to move some stuff around, but have we thought about, you know, with the risk of some of the furniture just walking off? And what can be done to maybe? I don't know if we want to lock things down or, you know, what options there might be for some of the more movable furniture?
I mean, I think we've had some of these discussions and the general sentiment is that site furnishings tend not to just disappear. There will be security. There is, there are cameras. If there, if there is a greater concern regarding movable furnishings, we can certainly, you know, respond to that. The benches are all fixed in place and the group table would be very difficult to steal due to weight. And the bike racks are obviously fixed, but if there is a strong sentiment regarding movable furniture or the need to lock it, and we would, we would receive that feedback and move forward accordingly.
Just to further that, what about the ability to etch things into it or tag furniture? Is there any way to have furniture that is somehow eliminates that possibility?
Some manufacturers do offer like a graffiti resistant coating. And there are graffiti resistant coatings that we could specify that would need to be applied. As far as engraving or digging into something, it, it's fairly difficult to stop that if you're using any kind of color like powder coated material or any material softer than galvanized steel. And so we are proposing in this situation that there is powder coated elements and there are some wood elements. So, you know, if that is a major concern, then, you know, again, I, I think that would be, we would, we would receive that and, and adjust accordingly.
I kind of feel like we have to cross that bridge if we come, if we come to it.
I, I, I have a question. Maybe this is more for staff about the security cameras that are going to be present at this site. I mean, do we know numbers or locations or? I mean, is the whole property going to be covered by security cameras or is it really just for the, the library itself? Have we thought about that?
There are exterior cameras on the building to capture the full extent of the site. They're mounted on the building. So the further away from the building you are, the less useful they will be. But there is, there will be cameras on every face of the building to capture the exterior as well as inside.
Yeah, are, are there any concerns? I mean, I know it would probably be difficult in the Habitat Garden and stuff like that. There's going to be things blocking the cameras from seeing things. Is that a security current concern that we've thought about or is it kind of, I mean, I would hate to say, well, let's just wait until something bad happens, then we'll worry about it. I'd rather kind of think if there's some way to set up a camera system so that, you know, most of the property is covered if we want to just make sure that we keep it safe.
That, that's not in the proposal at the moment. There, the extent of the camera coverage would be the parking lot, but it's, it's a scalable system. So if we want to add cameras in the future, there, there would be opportunities to do that. Or if we identify additional locations that are beyond the scope of, of what we have at the moment.
But we have had a whole security analysis done by CNPA and gotten, I haven't, we've done that a while ago, didn't we? To just get their feedback about what the additional material, additional security systems we needed to put in. And they felt, am I saying that correctly? No? Okay.
Yes, but it was
Yes, but
That was ten years
Twenty fifteen, so I don't know.
This is ten years ago. That's right.
I know that we want to keep moving, but I, I want to address a few things if I might, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
First, Mr. Skinner and I had a cause to be on a site visit to Bonner Shopping Center today. And we actually met with two council members while we were there at different times, but just want to acknowledge we have some wonderful resources in our community and we spent some time studying the way they secure their furniture. They've got a lot of very simple, thoughtful ways to secure very similar furniture to what we're pricing that isn't doesn't really interfere with the ability to turn the chair at a different angle, doesn't present a tripping hazard, which is another concern. So we definitely have some resources to tap to be thoughtful about this concern about things walking away. And then I don't want to say we're going to wait and see if we have a problem, but we do have to recognize whatever we might do in certain parts of the property are a little more park-like than library-like, and we want to be respectful. We've talked a lot about this. We have, it's a challenge for us. Probably the conservative risk manager me would put cameras in every single inch of that property, right? But you know, we are next to a neighborhood and we want to remember that parts of our property are right adjacent to residential uses. And folks may want to enjoy their residential component of their neighborhood without concern that the government's got a bunch of cameras watching what they're doing. So we can curfew the back end of the property too, and you just would not have a reason that you ought to be there after a certain time.
Okay, keep going.
Great.
We're on the trellis, there we are, on the trellis.
Any, any questions on, on this side before I?
I'm just curious how, how effective it would be based on its location being on the eastern side of the property. It would probably help with overhead shade, but like when the sun is past a certain point, there, it doesn't really seem like it will be effective, like the western access, which is when the sun is the most potent and it's the hottest part of the day in our community. It just, it seems that based on where it's located, it doesn't seem like it would be that effective to me. But I, I don't know if you did any study on that.
Well, I mean, I think part of it is that it's located in the appropriate place for the site.
Right.
And to make it an overall functional space, it's also located where it is to provide the nice view of Mount Tam from that location. And to provide if there ever was a reader or acoustic being played there, that there's a location that feels appropriate without having to create a raised stage or anything along those lines that were prior ramps, et cetera. I do also think that overhead sun is hot sun. And so I do think that it would facilitate some shade in that regard. We also, which this image does not show, but maybe the diagram does. There is, there are large shade trees sort of placed around that location. Now, will there at some point in time before the sun drops behind TAM and comes at a really low angle, will it get underneath that? Yes, it will, but it would through anything other than a box.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I think we can also make adaptations as use, I mean, a, as the building gets used and as that space get, gets used by the community, if there are additional shade structures we might need to add, we can consider that too. Because we don't really, I mean, we have visuals now of what the, the sun is, but the sun shifts around per part of the year and maybe we'll learn more as we occupy the space.
Yeah, and I mean, I think all trellises kind of perform in the same capacity in this regard. They provide an overhead less mitigation of sun. As opposed to a fully enclosed or something with a, a larger roof. I think what the ad hoc committee had pointed to was the, the trellis adjacent to, in Corder Madera, adjacent to the fields there near Cafe Verde that folks really enjoy. That is just an overhead structure. People are there in the afternoon. It seems to provide a nice amount of shade for those, for the people using it. Although this is a bit of a different design, it's similar function.
But there was no thought given to potentially planting vines or anything to?
There's a hundred percent the capability to grow vines on it if we were so inclined.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why there's planting at the entire perimeter of the shade structure where the posts would, would land. But again, the vines wouldn't affect a low west sun.
Correct.
And if there are any other thoughts as to what that could be or how that could perform, we would, we would love to hear any of those, those thoughts as well.
So you're on.
Yeah.
Here we go.
So we have some visualizations of what some of these different spaces could look and feel like. This is our look at what the shaded, the shaded grove could feel like with the variety of different seating options. You'll see that there's some movable elements that could be for one or two or possibly three folks that are very much within the grove. There are benches with arms and backs as well as a group table with chairs with arms. We also against the library have some additional seating there as you can see in the background that at certain times of the day would be a little bit more in the sun. In the distance of you, in the background, you can see the flexible lawn space with the trellis element we were just discussing beyond. And then if you were to walk over to the other side and be sitting out there, albeit in the early part of the day, given the shadow, you would be sitting underneath the trellis, possibly looking out at a bunch of people enjoying that flexible lawn space, sitting in the chairs that are flanking both sides and enjoying the shaded areas provided by those large shade trees. And then if we were to step back a few feet and walk out into that habitat garden and take a look back, this might be the feeling of looking through the backside of, of that trellis element over the bioretention area, which you had asked about before. So these are, this is the bioretention component with this idea of a crossing, bringing you into the habitat garden. And then looking through again to the, to the lawn.
Good touch to add the butterflies and the bees.
So that includes our, our look at the commons area. I can, we can either jump straight into looking at habit, at the habitat garden, or we can jump back to any of the plans or other exhibits for additional.
Yeah, let's, let's hold on before we get to part two and just bring it back to the council for any questions about this particular section, the commons area. Stephanie.
Oh, I have another question.
Fair.
So I like this potential water feature that's in the drawing. But you didn't touch on it and is it in the, is it in the budget or is that something that we have to?
Now, we, it was a part, it was a discussion point with the ad hoc committee. We decided to include a location for it, a potential location, but we have not designed it in as part of this scope. I think there needs to be additional discussion around some of the liability concerns, maintenance concerns, et cetera with that item. But we would be happy to provide some options. I think there can be some very nice sort of contained options that are quite small and don't provide much of a, a danger of anybody hurting themselves. But again, we would, before going down that road, probably look for a little additional push in that direction.
Did you want to comment on that?
I only wanted to say in our meeting with the Commons Foundation representatives yesterday, they informed us there's a lot of donor enthusiasm for a water feature. So they encouraged us to work on a plan that we could present to you to incorporate a water feature.
So just to give a little notion, we did include a location and it is in the drawings that were, that were priced, but we did not ask them to price it. So in the center of the shaded grove, which if we were to jump forward to the visualization image, would place it in this central planting area adjacent to the tree so that everybody around could kind of hear that, that sound and get some of that reflection and beauty. But again, certainly open to, to further discussion on that.
Great. Scott, did you have anything you want to add? Any other questions at this point? Is there anything that jumped out at you as a no-go for whatever reason? No? Anything that jumped out of you is let's buy more of those?
No, I, I, I would say that I was sort of ta, I was taken aback by the cost of the Adirondack chairs. Two thousand plus per chair seemed extraordinarily high to me, but I've never shopped for them. So that's coming from somebody who doesn't have a lot of experience, but yeah.
Julian, it's like.
So we also did some research by visiting Bon Air today, so I'm going to let Mr. Skinner share early findings.
Okay.
Yeah. So again, these are rough order of, of magnitude costs. And so what the design team did was they picked an Adirondack chair that matches the chairs that are on the base bit for the patio around the library. So there was a criteria document at a certain stipulated sum for the outdoor furniture for the library. And basically we wanted high-end furniture that wasn't going to walk away. So these, these Adirondack chairs are pretty hefty. These are, you would have to pick up a whole stack of these plastic chairs in a department store to get the same weight that you're going to get in one of these chairs. I mean, they're over 50 pounds each. The ones they have spec don't, they're some sort of plastic resin. They don't look like resin. They don't look like fake wood. We had them in our, in our office. They look like really high quality. And, you know, there's a, there's a price point for that. There are less expensive models. There are variations that, you know, there's, the ones that Bon Air are not the same as these. They're a little bit lower grade. So there, there are options. These were just picked to match the ones that are around the patio spaces. The other thing that does is it allows flexibility if we wanted to move furniture back and forth between some of these places. And I will say, these are rough order of magnitude costs that were presented. I Googled what the actual chair would cost on Amazon. If I went on Amazon, it's not $2,000.
Yeah.
But, uh, but there's a cost in, in getting them delivered. There's a cost allowance for if we did end up having to anchor them and things like that. So these are rough order of magnitude costs. Yeah, $2,000 is a lot for, for a lawn chair, but this is not, it's not your standard lawn chair. And the actual raw cost of purchasing the chair is, is probably closer to half that.
And I think we discussed it at the ad hoc meeting that it was worth the extra because it's in public use. It's not like it's sitting on a private patio in your yard where it may be sat on a couple of times by the same family unit. But public use has a lot more robust ability to damage things unless you get a higher quality item. So I think we talked about that.
That's well said. I mean, we're, we're providing recommendations for commercial grade, public sector furnishing. This isn't what you would necessarily. Yeah, this isn't what you would buy for your house. And if somebody were to decide to stand on it, jump on it, flip it over, they're not going to hurt themselves. It's not going to break. It's not going to cut them. So, you know, I did, I think that that is probably to a certain extent where the price difference stands. I do agree with Julian that if you look these elements up, they come in below $2,000, but I think that's a safe number.
Okay. If there's no more questions on this part from the council, or is there anyone in the audience who has a question of this specific, specific part, which is just the commons area we're discussing? Yes, Mr. Holmes, which, um, let's see. Yeah, I think so. And then let's ask, let's hear the public comment. And then if you need to return to answer some questions, we can do that.
Gentlemen, I just want, looking at this picture here, which shows the butterfly and the bridge and I think the swale. A consideration should be given to the almost certainty that kids will go right to play in the swale, water in the hole and will be jumping off the bridge.
Okay. Laura? Just lower the mic for you, please. Yes, thank you.
Does that work?
Yes.
Laura Love it, resident of Larsburg, board member, California Native Plant Society. I still have the email from Councilmember Andre promising us that there will be no lawn in the commons area. So I'm kind of appalled and the main reason is not only is it a sort of dead landscape, people are going to walk their dogs there. Then do you want your kids to play there? Do you want to walk over and sit on a chair there? You need to address that issue if you really are going to have lawn, because that is how it's going to be used. There's a picture of rope and post fencing. I mean, is that going to go around the lawn and try to keep the dogs out? Are we going to have signs? Has anybody thought about this issue? I just, I don't like it as a, as a choice. Yes, it's a native grass. You're going to have to move those very heavy 50 pound Adirondack chairs off of it to, to mow it every week. So it's just not a really great choice.
Okay.
From my point of view, we could do better. I'm kind of appalled at the color of the concrete. I hope it is not too late to change the top coating. The idea that we're going to have dark gray concrete is just really depressing. And I also think overall on the site, the building is very dark, which is very modern to a lot of people. But then that can all be balanced quite well with this lush garden that we're putting in. And then having all of the accessories and the pathways and the benches and shade sales all be warmer colors. And we've done that for some of the elements, but we missed the boat on the concrete. I just think it's, it's, it's going to look awful. I know we have to use it, but that particular company makes 60 colors. So I'm, we can pick a, a warmer one that would blend better. If we're going to go with the gold or the gravel, the granite crete, then the two things should mesh better. And that would be an easy fix, I think, to make. I'm also a little confused about the bioretention swale bridge, having these three inch pipes in it. I think the pipes are going to get clogged, the mice are going to have a fine time making homes in them. I just don't understand functionally how they will work. And if they are over a drop off, even for the rest of us who are kind of wobbled on our feet now, railings would be appreciated.
Thank you, Laura. I know you've been participating in this process for a long time, so thank you for your feedback. As in all public spaces and public buildings, there's always compromises that we've had to do. There was originally a plan for a very large lawn, green, green lawn area that has scaled back dramatically. But there are many members of the community who would like to have a lawn space for a small section. So we've, we're in compromised positions often for something like this. David, did you have something you wanted to say? We're kind of in both, just this section, the commons area. But if you have a question, we have our architects here and our landscape people.
It's more common. I just wanted to see if this was the right time. So I, as I was looking at this proposal in the, uh, package for the meeting, I, I couldn't help but think back on how challenging it was for all of us to end up with this common space, to move the parking lot over and create this space. And many of you were involved in that and it was, it was hard. It was really, really challenging time. And I have to say for me, when I look at this proposal for the common space, it really shows that it was all worthwhile. I mean, this is going to be fantastic. I, I, I really think so. And I, I, I want to give kudos to the ad hoc committee for, and, and the landscape architect, Austin's great work on this for just coming up with a wonderful design. It's really, really fantastic. And as, as been described, brings together all these elements in, in just a wonderful way so that everybody sort of gets part of what they wanted somewhere in, in this space. It's just, just great. And also thanks to the Commons Foundation for finding the funding to make this all happen. Those $2,000 Adirondack chairs, they're developing the funding for that. Not the city, not the citizens, it's donors. So kudos to them. It really does seem that the proposed design has the best features and meets all the needs. It's a wonderful mix of chairs, benches, tables, viewing areas, different surfaces. Just, just, it's, it's really wonderfully done. I do have just a couple of very brief comments with, with regard to the water feature, and it sounds like that's a favorite of donors to donate to that. I strongly urge that some safe water feature be out there. I'm almost done.
No, no, I'm not cutting you off. I'm just saying that water feature has been definitely contemplated as phase two.
Just that sound of the.
Yeah.
Sparkling water. I mean, everybody loves that and, and it can be done in a good way. One other thing about the commons area is I do have some concerns and, and I'm sure you can deal with this, is some sort of seating level visual screen between the commons area and the parking lot. So that as you're sitting there enjoying the shaded space and the, and the lawn space and so on, that you aren't looking over and just seeing the bumpers of a whole bunch of cars just sitting right there and especially glinting light off those. So that's, that's one thing that just seemed to me in the refugio area. I know we're going to get that. There's a swale and some screening there. But I'm, I'm concerned about lack of screening between the parking lot and, and the comments area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Yes, Sandra.
Sandy Goodman, a resident of Larsburg. It looks to me like there's a lawn on the west end of the building and there has been in all the drawings. Why is there the need for another lawn south of the building?
Okay. Well, I'm going to have Kostin describe this to us when, when, we'll add that to our list of questions.
You know, next thing, I can see after this is built, our dog owners will be petitioning for off-leash dogs.
And we know how we feel about that. You know, I had that same, I, I want to make sure we don't have that problem. Anyone online have question about the commons area? No? Okay. Kostin, you want to come back? And we'll just answer just a few of these. We don't mind not have the answer, but shaded area between the sitting area and the parking lot, it looks like there's some hedges or what do we have there? Just raise the mic a little higher because you're tall. There you go.
Presently, we do have, especially between the shaded grove and the parking area, we have a pretty large planting buffer there. So I do think that we can get some large plant material there that will give that feeling of screening. We can look at adding some additional planting on the opposite side where the lawn and the parking lot are flanked. I think that's very reasonable.
I'm sorry, just a quick question on that. It looks like what you have are shade trees, you know, which are, are great for sitting under any shade, but they're usually kind of skinny trees with a big thing above and doesn't have much kind of screening at the, at the eye level. Are we also going to have kind of bushes or lower planting there as well?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I, I envision kind of pull an image that kind of more in this feeling where maybe you're sitting here parking it on the backside. I do think that we want to be careful about sightlines. And I think there's a lot of safety in clear sightlines and I don't think that we want to make walled off spaces that are not visible for a variety of reasons, but I do understand wanting that feeling of not sitting in parking lot. And I do think that that can be achieved through sort of mid height type planting, but not like creating like a full wall.
Right. Can you speak to the size diameter of the pipes in the bio swell?
Yeah. So we had put together a very schematic cross-section that I didn't include in this presentation that's part of the pricing package. And what we're actually thinking, and this answers two questions at once, these are intended to kind of look and feel like bridges, but we're not going to make a bridge over a 10, 12 inch deep swell. That doesn't really work. It ends up sitting on the ground. And so instead it'll be more of like a, an at-grade deck that the bio swells come up to meet on either side. So it gives the impression of being a bridge. And then if there's a functioning bio swell that needs to overflow into the other bio swell, you can provide a pipe that goes underneath the at-grade crossing.
And then the last question was in the original design, there is that half moon sort of shaped lawn area by the entrance.
Yep. Which is.
Which has been designed there a long ti, for a long time.
Yep, that's correct.
That's not part of our commons group.
It is not. It's this, this small element here.
And it has a walls bench seating, right?
It has a circular path, a arc bench seat and has a really direct and strong relationship to this patio terrace. This space out here functions in a, in a different fashion for different size groups and for different types of, types of views.
Okay.
I would also just like to point out that the, the paving is raw concrete paving. There is no color. It's a cost factor. is raw concrete paving. There is no color. Uh, it's a cost factor. Um, so it's not, if I provided an image that was misleading, I apologize. Um, but it is raw concrete that then has a top cast, uh, which is a, like a liquid that you put on the surface to remove some of the surface concrete and allow some of the interior rock aggregate to show through. Gives it a little bit more of like color interest and a little more variation. So it doesn't seem like boring raw concrete.
Okay.
Yeah, I think actually the, the offending slide was the one that was in my presentation because I took a photograph of the concrete the day it was placed. And anybody who's done concrete knows that it fades quite significantly after it's first installed. So the concrete that was in my construction photo did look very dark. It is not that dark today and it will fade like regular concrete. So it'll be a, a gray concrete color, not the black that was in my photo.
Okay, Scott?
Yeah, I, I have a question for staff. Um, I, I'm hearing the concerns about dogs. And I am curious, we are not, I don't think it's realistic to say that no dogs are going to be allowed on the premises. Um, you could have, dogs have to be on leashes, but do we have a thought or a plan of how that's going to play out if, you know, fish twenty dogs, you know, hanging down or whatever. I mean, I mean, is that, have we thought about that? Or is it just like, we'll see what happens and deal with it at the time? And I'll withdraw that question.
I, I I have to give that answer. We didn't want to talk about before, right? We may have to wait and see what materializes to understand how we're going to cope with it. Dogs are always a very polarizing conversation, right? Um, some of us who own dogs are comfortable around lots of dogs. Some of us who own dogs are not comfortable about anybody else's dogs. And then there's people who don't want to be near any dogs. And we try in our public spaces to accommodate all of that. And that'll be what we'll have to figure out here. You know, it may be appropriate to put some signage up that reminds dog owners, this is a lawn for seating and you should behave accordingly and manage your dog accordingly. Um, then we do have the challenge, this is a public building and we will have to allow service animals into the building. So we have to be thoughtful of all that.
I, it has come up at the ad hoc meeting. And I mean, this is going to be something I think will be an ongoing challenge because there's a lot of people in our community who believe their dogs is their um, uh, additional family member. So we're going to have to deal with that. And I think that's something that the library board is also looking for policy discussions about with us in the next six months to a year before this opens. But I'm concerned about that too, but, um.
I mean, I, there may be a solution where there's a, someplace on this property. It's like, hey, this is the dog corner, you know.
I don't want to do that either. So we'll see.
It's a conversation. I think there's a, a solution somewhere. I just don't know what it is yet.
So what I'm hearing from the community and from people online and here is that, and from the council, that, that all our questions were asked and doesn't seem like we have any changes that we want to make, um, for the commons part. Um, do, oops. Do I, I got the consensus from everybody that
With the, with the exception that, uh, maybe the next version, we see some, uh, wherever screening you imagine, just so we can see what you're talking about. That'd be great.
I think it would be planted. I'm, I'm not envisioning like, uh, fences.
No, yeah, but maybe tall grasses. I like those. Um, okay, so Julian, are you comfortable then with our direction that we are um, all right with the commons description, uh, air, the commons area description as indicated?
Yes, yes.
Okay. No significant changes. So who will be giving the next presentation? You?
I think so.
Okay. So we are moving on to part two, which is the Habitat Garden Plus.
Yeah, great. I would also
Dana, do you need anything?
Um, pardon me.
Yes, Alison will, um, adjust. She has a magic code. Um, okay, so this is the second section, which is in our first handout, the pink outline. Um, uh, but in your thing, in your page, it's the white dotted line outline. So we are all looking at the same page. Great.
Okay, great. Um, I would also like to say that, you know, at this time, we have not finalized color selections or textures on the furniture, et cetera. So I think
And the plants.
Uh, on, I was just going to say in regards to, sorry, just jumping back
Oh, okay.
prior discussion. Um, you know, we, we generally in a rendering kind of put a general approach out there and dial it in as we go. Uh, I don't, I wouldn't say you should take every exact color to the bank.
Got it.
Um, great. So we'll shift over to the Habitat Garden, which as we have discussed is this perimeter area. Um, this is the updated design where we have tried to incorporate comments uh, that we received from the library committee, as well as some of these programmatic elements that we had discussed previously. Um, goals for the Habitat Garden in terms of programming are spaces for reading and quiet meditation. Areas for children. Areas for demonstration or an area for demonstration or education. Uh, to have some signage that would provide wayfinding and interpretation of the garden itself. Uh, opportunities for nature and, uh, possibly bird viewing. Um, and then in terms of planting, we have our berm perimeter area, which would primarily be shrubs and a certain other area that we're focusing on trying to make into a food hedge rope for animals. Um, planted bio filtration areas, meadow and low growing habitat, uh, planting areas, and then some specialized pollinator plantings and habitat structures. So looking again at that plan, we can start to see just diagrammatically how some of those elements lay out. We can see that we have that berm perimeter planting. We have those meadows and lower growing, uh, areas in the green. And then we have a path system that leads somebody throughout the garden with two entries. And those, uh, crossings into the site that I described a little bit ago, which are on grade, although they could appear and feel like bridges and give that feeling. From a programmatic perspective, we have also included entry signage as well as those interpretive signs throughout the gardens. Those are the triangles. We have provided a children's area, which is close to the children's, uh, patio or terrace. We've included that education and demonstration space and a couple of different locations for seating, meditation, reading. Um, these little orange circles are ideas for little habitat structures that could make the view kind of interesting and enhance the space. So starting to look at those paths and crossings, winding paths that navigate you through the habitat gardens into different spaces. We have been talking granite there, but I think we're still in this something about what that surface is. Um, the bio retention crossings, which here you can see how it could be just on grade with the bio retention plants coming up on either side. We've done a few of those that way. And then we've also proposed the idea that around the perimeter of, of the parking area particularly, that there might be something like this post and, uh, and rope fence to kind of indicate where that habitat garden begins and dissuade folks from kind of tromping through it without putting up a large unclimbable fence element. We've definitely been thinking about wayfinding and interpretations. We think it'd be really wonderful to have some interesting signs at the entry points. We've been looking at shifting the materiality away from that powder coated steel uh, and wood and sort of more refined wood elements that are in the commons area. And looking at possibly having some quartet steel and possibly even some of those kind of habitat house elements woven into some of the signage. Uh, within the site, some of the smaller signage could be some, a sort of exciting, simple, uh, quartet panel bent with some, uh, information either engraved or, or, uh, applied that would be about the plants and the animals that you might, uh, encounter there. Um, we've been thinking about education and play. Um, a lot of these images are geared towards the children's area. Uh, we included a, a willow hut, some willow fencing that goes around the space, uh, nature play logs and stump steppers. Um, and these stump steppers could also function as kind of a council ring or reading space. Um, or kids could kind of jump from one to the next. Um, within the, the garden, we've looked at some different seating options. Um, we're really liking this sort of monolithic timber type elements. Um, again, they're refined, but can also kind of feel a little bit more natural. They would probably gray in the, or silver, as you can see on the top right. And then in for those areas where we're looking to have that meditative or reading type feel, uh, we would look to set the bench into the landscape in an attractive way. Take this bench on the left and mentally put it where this more traditional bench is in the middle. And then looking to create habitat as well as opportunities for nature viewing in a way that's attractive and exciting. Um, we've been looking into creating a nature viewing blind that would be located at, on the circular part of the path. You'd see a couple of kids in there like looking out and trying to see that the bird creep up on their parents, whatever it happens to be. Um, some of these cool habitat structures that could be located in the meadow space, have the other plants growing up around them, but provide kind of a fun connection, a contemporary, beautiful connection to a natural process. And then again, we have some of these, uh, really kind of more natural seating elements that can be just out of a, out of a single log, kind of rough hewn. Again, that idea of breaking down the materiality, getting more natural as you move away from the building. And then kind of again, coming back to this visualization and thinking about what would it be like to be a little bit separated. Obviously, this is not a huge park. You would be able to, to some extent, see the boundaries of it. But I think that it could be really wonderful to feel like you're in this really dynamic, unique, nature filled space while also feeling close to, uh, family, to friends, to anyone else who might be spending time at the commons. Um, and here you can kind of see that idea of that post and rope fence that again, would not prevent anyone from walking over the plants, but would hopefully provide a fair, clear understanding of how one might operate there. And this is just some of the work that we've continued to move forward, uh, as far as developing the planting palette and thinking about seasonal dynamic and how the plants are relating to the different cycles of pollinators, birds, uh, and other animals. Um, and I think I'll just kind of, you know, we don't need to go into this in any great detail. I just wanted to include these. To kind of show what we're thinking. Um, and I did include a couple of images here of what would happen if we did, if there was a decision at any juncture to do any hydro seeding. I just wanted to express strong seasonal dynamic at different times of the year. Sometimes they look really, really good. Sometimes it would look fairly, uh, limited. So you know, kind of taking these images into account against, you know, some of what you see here. And so I think I'd like to stop it there and open it up for
Sure.
discussions and questions.
So does the council have any questions about the, um, Habitat Garden area as described? It could, you know, that what this children's area or the, um, the play structures remind me a lot of tabletops in the Presidio in that, in that whole area that they created a natural play environment for kids.
Really great space.
Yeah, and, and expanded it recently to include a lot more of this natural play structures like this.
Kind of the direction that a lot of play is going right now.
Yeah.
Uh, has a softer footprint in the world. Um, and we've been looking to work with a recycled materials yard that's in the east, in Ri- in Richmond, uh, who produces a lot of these nature play elements out of either trees that had to come down or that fell naturally and that otherwise would have been wood chipped. Um, and so we really like that partnership. Very excited about it.
Sarah, you had a question?
Uh, I don't, I, no, I don't have a question. I mean, I love this, um, Habitat Garden and think you guys have designed what is a beautiful Rolls Royce version of a Habitat Garden. And if money were no issue, I would be a hundred percent on board. I think, um, based on the costs, um, you know, I, I was curious to see, you know, what, 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 what might, uh, the result be? For example, if we were to just start the Habitat Garden at this, um, bridge area and have it go around the southern boundary of the property and eliminate the northern part of it. And instead, on the northern part, create maybe more screening for the residences that are in Rose Garden and just plant, say, some large trees and, um, you know, some kind of, uh, buffer for sound and um, privacy, um, how that might impact the cost.
Yes, I think you're referring to kind of this, this area here. Um, and so currently, we do have this, this berm, which is like a three foot high earth berm that will mitigate some sound. It does also help to elevate the planting that's on that berm. And there are trees intended for along that edge. Um, there is certainly the potential to reduce square footage. Um, and to just to sort of pull in the boundaries of it a bit. Um, I can't speak to exactly what that would do percentage wise for the price as some things are kind of, you know, if, if you're doing soil prep for, you know, let's just say it's everything here and around. And this is fifteen percent of that space. I don't know if that means the cost go down, goes down by fifteen percent.
Right.
I don't know that it's quite so one for one square footage to cost. I'd probably leave that up to some of the decision making from the contractor and the cost estimating there. Um, I do think there's the potential at any point in time to include an element like this in the future, like the, the willow huts, the willow fence, nature play. Um, you know, these could essentially happen at a future date when funding is available. Um, it could be that paving is done and they are furnished at a later point in time. Um, I think that there's a lot of mix and match that could happen. And I think that the pricing that has been provided allows that kind of menu selection. Um, so I do think there's a lot of kind of cool combinations depending upon what is hitting the community and y'all kind of in the, in the heart space that you're like, no, it wouldn't be special without this. This is what we're going to focus on. But maybe the demonstration area, we think about it later if we feel like there's just this huge request for overflow programming from the library. Or if community groups start asking to rent a space where they could do X, Y, or Z.
But I think our goal tonight is to give feedback for, um, the presented plan um, as the maximum abil- able thing. Um, and the presented plan, if we approve that as presented, is also the fundraising tool for the Commons Foundation to
Agreed.
get the maximizing capacity for us to do the complete, the complete plan as described.
Well, let me follow up on, uh, Councilor Margalisa's question in the sense that let's say, just using round numbers. You know, this plant is a million bucks. And we say, we'd love it, but we don't have a million bucks spent on this. Let's say we've got quarter of a million dollars. Is there, it, it sounds like there's not really an à la carte menu with prices because it's going to change based on what's with it. So would we say to you, hey, can you present us with a scaled back version and this is our budget? And then you would come up with a new drawing of what we could have for that budget? Or is there some way for us to extrapolate from this, what we can have based on, on what our budget is?
I think Julian wants to weigh in on that.
Sure.
Yeah, I was just going to say that what we're presenting to you are rough order of magnitude costs. And the idea was um, that you could rough order, for instance, say, I would like to uh, only do the west or only do, sorry, only do the east or only do the south. Uh, because I think that's a reasonable goal to aim for and we'll find some other purpose for the, for the rest, which um, if we don't have another purpose, would end up being hydro seeded, which was the last slide that, that Kostin shared. Um, so given that the round number for all of this is nine hundred and thirty, y- you could give us direction. Because one thing to consider here is that, uh, we have a contractor on the site who's doing, um, earthwork and irrigation for, um, the rest of the site. So if we wanted to realize the costs that are in here, these are based on doing most of that work now as far as the grading and the prepping and the stubbing, the irrigation. Um, so you could give us direction. We want to focus on that. Go on, develop the drawings. These are concept drawings. So plans with elevations and levels and quantities would have to be developed uh, for Alton to go to bid and get actual uh for Alton to go to bid and get actual prices. Um, and so if we thought there was only a desire to spend up to four fifty, or if there was only desire to do half of one, half of these areas, one side instead of the other, then we would take that direction and we could roughly tell you, yes, we could do one half for four fifty.
But
Or if
The 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 challenge, though, is that if we have groups that are raising money to help us fund this and we don't know what they're going to end up raising for us, we don't actually know what a budget is. So it's very hard. I mean, I I would hate to commit to something and then end up not having the the money to fund it. Uh, but I would also hate to not commit. Then we have the money and say, well, you didn't commit early enough and now it costs more. You know, so it puts us in a tough spot, um, not really understanding and and maybe uh sorry, I'm not there anymore. Go ahead.
So it looks like um, if you're okay with sharing the spotlight or the stage, um, I think Dana Swisher with the Refugio would like to come up and and provide some information and feedback. Cause I think there's some direct questions that would probably be relevant for you to answer. So just for the purpose of the audience, just to introduce yourself to the mic so that people who are maybe watching this later will know who you are.
I'm Dana Lauren Swisher. Um, I am the executive for, excuse me, the Fugio Marin. And uh, Julian and I had talked a little bit about this before. Um, we have already fundraised um some significant money for the first part of the plan. So for me, while you have Alton on, all the equipment here, it makes the most sense to grade and soil prep the entire site. Like you've got them there. Get it done, get the studying done, get all that stuff done. And then we can also do planting, especially trees and some established planting. The granite creek cap is really expensive. Um, Julian would mention that it doesn't necessarily have to be ADA all the way through it. We can have parts that are ADA compliant that are going to specific programming areas. But we could just have a hard path, dirt path for at first, or a um slightly less, more expensive than dirt path, but less expensive than granite, greatest, the decomposed ground, granite. So there's lots of options and I feel like we should really go
Go all out.
Go for sure.
Go all out for the, for the uh
es- especially for the first phase, like while while we have the Birmingham soil prep, that's super, that's like that, that's hard to fundraise for, but we'll, we have funding for that. And so and then funding for all those fun things like the child's play area and you know, the great signage and all that is a lot easier to fundraise for. So that's
Let me ask you a question and I'm not sure uh you or or Julian can answer this. Uh, if we do that and we prep the whole uh whole area and we don't end up with enough funds to actually plant the whole, do what we want with the whole area. What happens to the part that we didn't have the funds for? Is there, is there a less expensive alternative?
Planting and like we can get definitely the trees and the hedge rows and things in.
For the entire area we're talking about. So so if the city does the 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 grading port portion of it, you feel comfortable that uh private groups such as yours would be able to fundraise for the for the planting. Okay, that's that's fair.
But you also, that they also gave the alternative of hydro seeding certain sections that may um need to wait for phase two.
Put the plants we want in than to go with hydro seeding, because you're going to have to undo the hydro seeding if you want to put the plants you want in.
Thank you for your, any questions?
Yeah, I I have a question since since you are so involved in this and you are representing a group that is helping to fund this.
Yes.
Are there any things in this project that you either wanted to change or that you, you know, do you agree with the, you know, the the drawings and you think that's best use of the space?
Carson and Catherine uh Wolfers, who's our project manager, and I have actually been working together on the plans. So we've been helping to select the plans and we love the ideas.
Stamps.
Super excited about it.
That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
And Dana, I want to say I um through this whole process, I've learned a lot about um habitat gardens and the importance, I mean, and I think it comes from your, you're in your group. And also when I walk every day through Neil Cummins, where you've done a tremendous habitat garden. Just how important islands of landscaping and habitats are. I've learned that through this process that I had no idea about before. And the importance of having spots along um a transit corridor of the insects to create the pollination. So.
So we, you know, we are creating a call, a great Larkspur corridor. So we started with Laura Lovitz. I owe central, we call it the cop garden, but it's the Central Marin Police Station right there, that corner. You might have noticed a lot of bulldozers out in front of Hall.
Yes.
Our project, we're doing a habitat garden for the front of Hall Middle School. And then and then you just need like a little, a little flying bridge to get over to Larkspur Habitat Garden, which is spectacular. I mean, having sixteen thousand square feet is fantastic. That's why I don't like. Yeah, you could do it in phases, but I just think you should go for it.
And then they, the the uh little insects fly over to Neil Cummins and then they keep going. Yeah.
But it's, it's great. Like Larkspur didn't even know it, but you're becoming like a model for for corridor habitat planting. So good on you.
Thank you. Are there questions? Oh, we have Dana here. No? Thank you for all your hard work on this. I know it's a passion project and um you've taught many members of the community. I just described what I learned from you and your team. Um, but also the kids um and the demonstration gardens that you put together. And congratulations on receiving your Teacher of the Year Award and also and also your grant that um is spectacular that
It was for the Hall, the Hall project.
I understand, but just the the initiative to to really take this forward and bring it forward to um receive grant because you receive a funding grant because you've articulated the value to children's learning of this process.
And the community.
And the community.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And a nice picture of the paper. Okay, uh, council, any other questions of yes?
Um, this isn't, this isn't a question. I mean, you guys have done a great job. Um, you know, putting together plans and drawings for the habitat garden. I mean, this is more a question for my colleagues. So, you know, it's, the habitat garden is a big space and, you know, originally when um Noel and Tam had put together, you know, drawings, there was a potential of building other structures on this lot, on this parcel.
Phase two, like uh
Right.
Another part of a building.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, you know, my concern is the habitat garden is expensive and it's got some really fantastic features. But, you know, do we want to spend that money knowing that we have conversations going on with the firehouses? With Parks and Rec, um, and with other, you know, city properties. You know, that, you know, future city council may want to end up building something on this parcel. And so I would hate to have Refugia and, you know, other donors, you know, contribute a lot of money and we make it really nice. Um, but we decide, you know, some future council decides in five years that we need to build something on this site. And so um I, that, that's, you know, I bring it up for discussion.
Yeah.
Just in terms of, um, even though it is donor money, I think we, we should consider like, you know, the longevity of this. Um, and if we're going to use, um, you know, private funds. Uh, you know, and it's, it's beautiful. It's exciting. I I think it's, you know, I think it is going to be really exciting when this project is done. Um, and it's a point of civic pride. It's going to be a wonderful scenic building. But just, you know, I, I, we had, there are other conversations going on with respect to other civic buildings. And so until those conversations get to a certain point, I, I am torn against, you know, I am torn about just spending a million dollars on the habitat garden. And is there a way maybe to either section off parts of it that we have a habitat garden, but other parts are sort of landscape light? So that if we do decide, if the future council decides to build another structure, um, that we don't feel so bad about having to, you know, remove a lot of, yeah, remove a lot of landscaping. So anyways, that's a question for my colleagues.
Yeah, I mean, I I wanted to say, I think unanimously, this is, you know, incredible aesthetic. And, you know, it's wonderful for nature lovers. I'm curious um about, you know, as you had said, Mayor Way, that, you know, as you use the space, you begin to see what the demand is. So, you know, on the one hand, there's tunnel tops and there's, you know, Hummingbird Park, which are aesthetic and incredible successes. I was also involved in a meditation garden in Nevada, which got no traffic, nobody there. So um, I, you know, as I look at it, I think the comments have been sort of saying the same thing. Is there a way to line item this? I I'm also uh a little wary of of the price tag. And, you know, for example, looking at the three hundred thousand dollar, you know, granite, is is there a way to do a really low cost path to see whether the traffic comes, you know, not to take away from the aesthetic experience entirely, but you know, to to look at it as a line item phased project that addresses, you know, the future proofing of it as well as just measuring the demand and the value of it to the community.
Well, I think it was mentioned that, you know, there are uh potential options for if we decide to approve the generalized concept, they come back with um more specifics. Julian works with the team to come back with more specifics and give alternates to some of those questions. The example being maybe the path only has a certain amount that's ADA accessible by law. So we do have flexibility that way. Cause we're, we're just conceptually looking at whether we move forward with this idea and then the, our team narrows it down. But to your point, um originally, ten years ago, it was phase one and phase two. And phase one building was going to be this and phase two building was going to be here. And they were going to be connected by uh a bridge, but we passed that a long time ago because we didn't have the design or the funding for something like that. I, I see the potential that a civic building like this could expand in the future. But I reasonably don't think that's going to happen in the next short period of time for what we have. I think the community is going to get a tremendous value out of this building. And when we move into it and we see the form and the function is going to work, maybe ten years from now, they might want to expand it, but I think that's a bridge we have to cross then. Yes.
Question for uh first staff. So if we were to build another building on this property, I assume it's going to be south of the parking lot.
Right.
And uh, my question is, if we are doing grading for landscaping, is that similar to the grading that you would have to do for a building so that it's not wasteful if we do the grading and then you know, we, we decide, hey, you know what, we can't have City Hall in this building anymore. We're going to build a new City Hall south of the parking lot there. We've already done the grading or do we have to do it over again?
I think you'd be fair. I'm not the engineer in this team, but I think it'd be fair to say you have to think of everything that's invested now as sunk costs. And if you want to do a building later on, some portion of the sunk costs are lost in order to build a new building. And I don't, I think so much of this is configured to the here and now that it's difficult for staff to speculate what we'd have to tear up and lose or what we could retain and make most use of. Fair enough, Julie.
Yeah, I anticipate you could plan for a future building and build a garden at the same complete, for example, they, they had to condition treat all of the soil underneath the building to build the, the foundation slab, which is the complete opposite of what you would do for a planting area. It would be a complete uh do over.
And from, and to address your concern, because I, I think, I mean, I'm fiscally, we, we're very fiscally responsible to council and we try to work through these things. Um, I'm confident that we have a very um, a very um competent Commons fundraising team and the Refugio fundraising team um and the city's resources that a plan like this will draw a lot of excitement. Even more so, um, now that we've got a building up and um a parking lot about to happen and we've got these plans. That I think uh I'm confident that there's going to be um some nice fundraising options with this, that it's not going to take as big of hit as we're worried about.
Well, I, I think, I think Stephanie's point, which, you know, I I share to an extent.
Yeah.
You know, is we are currently trying to figure out what we're going to do with this building and how much it's going to cost. And and if it's not possible, do we build City Hall someplace else? And I mean, I think we're kind of in the the middle of that right now. And I think if we decide to do this, we're kind of taking that off the table in a sense. If if we say to 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 a, a, a group, hey, put five hundred thousand dollars into making beautiful plants here and then six months later, we say, ah, we're digging them up. That's not gonna, that
Have you been a real owner? It takes, it takes ten years to make a decision like that, not six months.
Maybe, okay. So so I'm just, I don't want to get into a situation where, you know.
Velvet or Timberland Library for their phase two was twenty-five years later. So I don't know. Uh, but I hear you for that. I I feel, but I don't want to get lost with the momentum we have also. And get, I mean, we are, we are now at like um the the five yard line, if we use a football analogy. I don't want to fall back. If we have these plans and we have a team and we've got the grading, as Dana said, they're right there building this plan. We don't have a plan for a new City Hall. We don't have a plan for those other things. We might in five years, we might in eight years, we might in ten, and I think that's a bridge we cross when we get to it. If we ever get to that.
I mean, in all fairness, could we, this space is not large enough to build another City Hall.
Well, I don't know, but who knows? We could double decorate for some reason, but we don't know yet. I mean, we've got, we've spent a lot of time debating this for years about a two-story building and a one-story building. We're here with a one-story building that um.
Yeah, I mean, look, let me be clear. I mean, you know, City Hall is one structure, right? And we've got Parks and Rec, who, you know, Hall Middle School, we have to find space for, you know, we have Public Works, which runs, you know, space from Tam Union School District, and that could potentially, I mean, there are other use civic uses where we would need to find, you know, space for our, our staff. So I'm not, I'm not saying that we're going to move City Hall over there, but I am just saying, should we preserve that optionality? You know, I'm, I'm raising the question. I, you know, I, you know, and so should we just preserve some optionality by, you know, maybe moving the habitat garden um or making it smaller or I, I, you know, I don't know, just, just so that, you know, there's, there's at least some space where we don't feel so bad about making a decision, you know, five years down the road that we want to locate something on that parcel.
So, so I, I, I agree with you with the exception that hearing what Julian said, unless we do nothing and we leave it as like a empty field, everything we do is going to be sunk cost. We're going to have to do over.
Right.
So the question is, and and I agree with Catherine in the sense that we don't have a plan. It's going to take time. And do we want to leave it kind of cruddy for five years with the thought that maybe one day we'll use it? Or should we make it, you know, really pretty and usable now? And if the day comes when we
Rent it.
Back and we say, oh, you know, we, we found a better use for it, so be it. But it may be long enough in the future that we'll have gotten the enjoyment out of it, you know, for the five or eight or ten years, whatever it is.
You want to say something?
You know, even if we have to, you know, change courses down the road. I mean, that, that, that seems to be what I'm getting from, you know, all the different perspectives.
But I, I recognize how important it is to keep our head clear about all our other expenses that we have coming up. And we do have a lot in this community of structural needs, not only in this building, but in our public works building, I mean, in our re- our uh recreation building, our four fire stations. It's a big lift that's coming ahead of us, we know. But this project has been a big lift and it's almost done. And I think we need to kind of focus in on it at this point. Just my thought. Yes, city manager has something to say.
Well, since a slight transition will start happening in the conversation, so I wanted to remind the council and the public that on page seven of the staff report is kind of this à la carte budgetary menu for this particular discussion. And I think what I hear Swisher saying, what I've heard Mr. Skinner say before is the top two items, doing the grading and the soil prep and the irrigation, those are probably things to, if you're going to move this forward, to think about the city committing to. Because they're really not things that people donate money to and they're things where we can capture economies of scale with Alton. Uh, I think the item we have to go back and talk about is Path of Travel. That's the big ticket item on that list and. And, um, and I think we've been talking with our city attorney about what the ADA does and doesn't say. We've been talking a little bit about what really we think people would want to do in terms of circulating. You know, this is a, this is a beautiful plan where our idea was to give you sort of that what-if scenario. But, uh, as you go through the rest of the conversation, I did want to say, I think I'm hearing we want to know a particular about those two top line items. And if you're comfortable with the city committing 180 to 200,000, if you're advancing the garden.
So, so I'm sorry. And just, just to clarify, um, we as a city council would be able to commit to the soil prep and the grading and kind of keep, push the other decisions off a little bit to see, you know, based on fundraising or whatever other situations.
I think the way this conversation is going tonight, and remember tonight, you're giving us direction on what you like, what you don't like, what you're concerned about cost-wise. Is we go back, we talk with some of the people you've heard tonight from the project team, from Refugia, from other community supporters. And we say, okay, the council's comfortable of us putting a plan together. They have budgetary concerns. The city can probably come up with 200,000 to do these sort of less sexy items that, uh, that we can capture economies of scale with the contractor. Let's talk about the rest of it and what a realistic budget is in 2025, 2026, 27, 28, and so on.
And alternatives.
And alternatives. Yeah. So I think, I think as you continue this conversation, I just want to focus you on. I do think if you're talking about advancing the concept of the garden, staff's likely going to assume those first two line items are ours to figure out how to pay for.
Okay. So I hear from our conversation that we're, that, that the concept of this habitat garden we're supportive of as the concept, as, as described here. And moving forward with Julian and the team with a little bit more refinement and some of the choices we can do for, um, cost savings perhaps, knowing that we're not making a budgetary decision tonight.
But I, I, I think the question before us is, are we willing to commit $200,000 to the grading and the soil and the things like that?
Well, he hasn't, no, that's not, that's something forward yet.
I'm saying, as you have this conversation, if you're telling us to move this forward, I'm probably going to make that assumption that the city needs to figure out how to pay about 200,000 to get this where it needs to be.
Right. So, so in essence, even though we're not really voting on it, that's the direction.
Right.
So I, I want to.
Spending it today.
And, and, you know, just be clear, it might be more as we have these conversations. We'll come back and, you know, you will make the final decision, but this guidance tonight's really helpful for us.
So, so the guidance tonight is council, are we comfortable giving the green light to commit to spending $200,000 on the grading and the soil for the habitat garden?
No, I, I don't think that's the, that's the direction that the, that the staff is asking for. I think they are asking for whether we are supportive of the habitat garden plus plan that's been presented. And, um, the idea that, that this new library will have a habitat garden as described here with the features that are described here, some of them negotiable based on the cost assessment that will be further refined.
And can I just ask, you know, obviously we are just interpreting staff's request for direction and the meaning of that request for direction. So can you just explain to us what exactly you are asking us to, to decide? And what that message is going to, to be heard as?
I, I do think it would be helpful for staff to hear the council's comfort level of the commitment of taxpayer money.
Of $200,000.
Well, in general.
In general, to a habitat.
And I'm not going to, you're not, I hope.
Ballpark.
Right. You, you know, because this has been an eye-opening experience for me. And every time I think there's no more money, someone in this community stands up and says, I'll pay for that. So I don't want to make any assumptions before we go have that conversation. But I, I've always tried, as I've, as I've evolved in how this works, when you do a public-private partnership, I've found it's helpful for the city at times to say, we'll make sure that happens. And I think what I've been hearing is you probably in telling us to go work on this plan, we're signaling, we'll make those first two line items happen. We'll figure it out. If it's city funds, if it's something else, great, but it may be city funds, but we'll make sure. And, you know, investing in soil that can actually have plants grow in it and irrigation, those are pretty reasonable investments for the city to make in the property.
I just want to bring it to everybody's attention that originally we had budgeted $70,000 for the habitat garden. So even though.
70?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, well, if you're talking about the first two line items that the city will need to cover in order to prep the land and take advantage of the project that ha- is in place and leverage the economies of scale with all of the resources on the property. We're talking, you know, a comfort level of 180,000. So we had at one point budgeted 70K, so it's really adding an additional 110.
Got it.
It's just another perspective.
So we're having a robust conversation, but I have not opened this, this section up to the public. So, um, we did open the commons area up to the public for, um, for their comments. So let's do that.
Can I, can I touch the third rail really quick?
Yes.
Before we do that.
Dunks.
I didn't want to let Vice Mayor Andres and Councilmember Candel's comments go without pointing out.
Okay.
We're, we, we're focusing so much on this area. If, if the community, some future community at some future date feels that a, a second structure needs to go in the building, uh, you know, as our good friend David Muller tells us, people aren't going to be driving anymore, so we won't need a parking lot. So maybe that's where an additional structure is going to go. Just throwing it out there. Don't, we don't have to focus entirely on this garden.
Listen, I'm probably only alive for 25 more years and I don't think it's going to happen. Unless a windfall of money. Laura, please join us in this.
This question was to you all. If it was priced at $70,000 to begin with, how did we get to 1 million? I mean, I don't understand where you get these numbers from. I could do the entire garden in $68,000. I could get plants donated. I don't know how to do that because it's so complicated and so many different people handling different pieces. We could get stone down donated. We can get benches donated. I, I would like to see retaining walls go up on the berm so that the soil doesn't run down onto the very expensive path and things like that. We can do fundraising for that through CNPS. But I, this whole process has been very frustrating. I, the habitat garden, you are going to get a habitat, no matter whether you plant it or don't plant it. You are going to get weeds instead of chosen plants. Plants run wholesale about 350 for a four-inch plant. And a one gallon is 650. So why are we getting $90,000 for the frigging plants? We don't have to buy 24-inch boxes.
Okay.
And I also want to remind everybody that a garden is something that go, that's a process. It is never done. As you know, from your home garden. So the trees need to get in, the bigger shrubs need to get in, put some cheap ground covers underneath. There are plants that will get six feet across from one plant for 450 and just hold the soil while the shade grows in. And then next year and the year after that, and the year after that, come and start filling in. And that means it doesn't all have to be raised at once. The benches can wait. Path would be very, very helpful. And one more item on the signage, which I hadn't brought to city council because I haven't got approval. But we are hoping like Dana mentioned, we, city of Larkspur has put in a habitat quarter now. And we want to put signs on it, um, little round signs. And then we wanted one bigger sign that explained why it's so important to have a habitat. And of course, the library is the ideal place to put it.
Good.
That's what I used to do for a living. I just designed one with a quarter of Madera Creek project. I designed the one at this community, um, garden and the Bay Model. They don't cost $90,000. At least that's not what I got paid. So we lowered that price as well. I just don't understand where you're coming up with these numbers.
Okay. Well, we'll work with the, with our, uh, staff about that. Sir, yes. Hi, Tom.
I'm Tom Goldman. I live in Larkspur. My question is, what is the water, daily water consumption of the entire garden in summer?
Okay, that'll be a. So.
All right. So hang on, I'm, I'm, excuse me. Could I just ask if you're going to answer the question, you come up to the mic so the people online could hear? Uh, I don't know if you want to.
So I, I think a lot of those specifics, um, I don't know if that's readily available at the moment. But, um, we can get back, Tom, I, how about if we get back to you about that? The water consumption is a question.
Just say that, that you're only, you're provided a water budget by the Marin Municipal Water District that you can't go over.
Uh huh.
So all of our designs always come within or our significant over than the allocated water budget for the site. So that's, that's all I can say.
Um, David, and.
All right. David Muller for the very large spur. So, uh, in, in my view, when I look through these drawings, uh, the habitat garden is just a fantastic companion to the commons and the library. And each of them just meets this totally different need and they're just unbelievably complimentary. So just as, as a package, I, I think it's just stunning. The adventuriness and the playfulness of the habitat garden. I mean, just think of little kids in there with all that rough furniture and things to see and do and interpret. I mean, it'd be a wonderful thing for maybe a whole different group that might use the commons or might use the libraries, or maybe they use all three. The idea of, uh, grading and doing the soil prep, well, the contractors on this site anyway, just makes total sense to get the best possible deal for doing that. And we've already seen that with some other things that have been talked about tonight. And, uh, clearly if that first step is committed to, whether it's through city funding or a public-private partnership or all private, getting that going creates the momentum to attract other funding. I mean, once it starts growing, going, uh, like you, just think about if, when the library was proposed and funding for that, if it's the library plus landscape, a lot harder to do than there's the library. Now let's work on the landscape. So that idea of attracting funding is huge. As far as, uh, other, the future and other future needs, I would really encourage you not to ignore the future, but to let future councils make the right decisions then based on circumstances that are then present, that we can't particularly anticipate right now. And I'll just give you an example that this building, we don't know what's going to happen with that. But if the library pulls completely out of this building, this building is going to have some extra space perhaps to accommodate other city functions. So, uh, the, the idea of potentially this facility with all three of these features, the library, the commons and habitat garden, it's going to be spectacular. It's going to be one of the best places to be for a built place in the whole county. And to miss that opportunity because of something that might happen to the future, I'd be pretty cautious about that. If a future council decides we really need that space for this building, we're going to have to remove part of this. Maybe remove the parking lot. Had thought of that one. Thank you, Dan. But the point is, it's hard to anticipate that they could make good decisions. But right now there's big time momentum on this. The reason I was going back to talk to Dana is, can you fundraise around this? Can you get money? And, and she thinks she can to help make this, this work.
Yeah.
So, uh, no guarantees of the future, but this is a bird in the hand. There's a lot of momentum and it could be just a fantastic facility.
Thank you, David.
I hope you'll encourage staff to, as I heard it, take the next step to come up with a planning and then come back with a specific budget requested. Thank you.
Okay, Robin. Yes, no?
I'm not going to follow you.
Oh, come on. I should have called on you first because we, we get to hear him too much sometimes. Just kidding, just kidding. All right. I don't see any hands raised online, so I think we'll just bring it back to us. Sounds like moving forward. Good night. Thank you, Sandra. Thank you, Tom. Sounds like direction moving forward. I mean, we expressed a lot of concerns about finances and making sure our staff, um, brings us some, um, flexibility in some of the plans, um, as they refine it better. But it sounds like, um, the consensus from the community that we heard from and from us is to move forward with the habitat garden plus as described. And bring it back to us at a future time when it has been further refined in its budgetary. Does that sound good?
Does that give you sufficient direction?
Yes, I, I think the speakers are right. We, we need to sit with our, our new partners and talk about a phased approach, not just in their world, but in our budgetary world. So I think we can sit down and work that out.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, people. That brings us to 8.1B. And who's going to do this presentation?
Uh, this is me again. So this is the second part of the library presentation. This one does have a requested action of council to adopt a budget amendment. This is specifically for improvements to Rose Lane, which plans you approved for a public bid at a previous meeting. Essentially, we're widening Rose Lane as it approaches Doarty so that there's both a left turn and a through right turn lane out of Rose Lane onto Doarty. And then construct a traffic circle at the driveway where the library, um, is. And then, um, a small parking lot on the west side of Rose at the Doarty. And, um, it's basically one single row of parking. So we completed the plans. We went out to bid. We received four bids. The low bid was, uh, 1,134 from Bowman Landscape. We did a bid review. We determined they were the lowest responsive bidder with the lowest, uh, lowest responsible bidder with the lowest responsive bid. The project budget only had 750,000 allocated for that project. So, uh, to award a contract to Bowman, which is our recommendation, we're requesting that we add $350,000, uh, to the budget for the construction. 300, sorry, 300, yeah, 350, 250 is to get up to the million, which was the bid. And the extra 100 is the 10% contingency that we like to have in the budget when we're awarding, uh, construction contracts. So that's 350,000 of the budget request. The rest of the money is, there's 150,000 in, um, costs associated with the acquisition of Rose Lane that have not been budgeted for. Um, and then we anticipate another $25,000 in consultant fees, uh, to get through the end of that project for, uh, construction observations. So the total request for each of those components is 525,000 to add to this year's capital improvement program budget. We've identified available funds in some of our street funds, specifically the Transportation Authority of Marin, uh, Measure AA transportation tax, 350,000 from that fund and then 175,000 from, uh, gas tax to fill that, uh, funding gap. And so the request tonight is that you, uh, adopt the budget amendment to add the funds into the project. Um, and then that you authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Bowman Landscape, uh, for the construction of Rose Lane.
Okay. Are there questions of that? It's pretty straightforward. So the money's coming from the TAM Measure AA and from the gas tax. And that's sufficient to cover it?
Yes.
Yes. Um, and that will get us the complete project of the roundabout that's going to be, uh, by the parking lot and the widening. And not the paving of the staff parking.
No, it includes the staff parking area too.
Sorry, it's getting late. Uh, any questions of staff on this? No? Uh, any questions from the community on this? No? All right. Any questions online? I don't see any hands raised. Sounds like we need an, um, an approval for this resolution. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make it a, a motion approving resolution amending that, uh, 2025, 2026 capital improvements program according to, uh, the description in business item 8B. Is that sufficient?
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, anyone opposed? Any abstentions? No? That measure passes. And Julian, I want to say to you and the staff, thank you very much for the hard work of getting this paving project and with, uh, the Rose Lane community. It's taken a long time. It's taken a lot of negotiations by you to work with the different homeowners organizations that are there. But I think overall this will benefit the, um, neighborhood a lot because that they will have tremendous ability to control transit throughout their neighborhood by allowing, um, this roundabout to direct traffic away from their homes and into the library. So I know it's been a long road for you and it's still going on, but you're a road guy, so you get it. All right, that means we are now to nine, which is adjournment. Our next meeting is, uh, September 17th, um, same place. And we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.